Recording in progress.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the first community meeting for the Town of Winchester North Main Street Study. This evening, March 2, 2021. My name is Josh Fialla. I'm a principal planner at MAPC. We're here this evening to discuss the North Main Street corridor in Winchester from about the intersection of Skilling's Road to the Wilburn City Line. Before we get too far along, we'd just like to make sure that all participants are aware this meeting is being recorded. A recording will be posted on the town website for other participants to view after this evening. If you do not feel comfortable being recorded, please turn off your camera and stay muted throughout the meeting. Otherwise, we're considering your video and participation to be a part of the meeting. So we just have a few helpful Zoom reminders as we get rolling. So the meeting is being recorded, as I just mentioned. We ask that participants stay muted. We will have some portions of the meeting for questions, comments, and some discussions. So we'll unmute people during those times, but during the the presentation portions, we we suggest that you remain muted to avoid any audio issues. During the comments and question periods, you can use the raise your hand function, which should be available in your Zoom options. If you don't see that option, you can turn your video on and literally raise your hand, and we'll try to take a look in the the squares of the videos to to make sure that we recognize people. And then you can also use the chat, which is available to you, to raise questions or post comments throughout our our program this evening. And if if it's available and you're comfortable with it, we'd love to have you turn your video on, just see who's out there, see, see whether you're you're smiling or grimacing as we go through this effort. So it just helps helps to feel that we're actually speaking to, speaking to the community rather than the black box out there. So we appreciate that. So we'd like to get started with a few introductions and welcome. We'll tell you a little bit more about who we are. But first, I'd like to hand it over to Planning Board Chair Heather von Meuring for a brief welcome from the town.
Thank you. Thank you to all the members of the Winchester community who are joining us this evening to take on the first phase of public feedback for the Main Street Study. As noted, I am Heather von Mary. I am Chair of the Planning Board. Along with me this evening is Diab Gerius. He is the Vice Chair and Secretary Secretary of the Planning Board as required per Mass Law. We have Maureen Meister, Heather Hannan, and Cheryl Wolf, all members of the Planning Board with us. If you ever want to ever reach one of us, you can reach all of us by emailing at planningboard@winchester.us. We all receive those emails. In addition with us this evening is Brian Zakali. He is our Town Planner. And if you have any questions, please feel free to also reach out to him as well. He's a wonderful asset and resource for the Planning Board, but also for the town and for the residents. So please reach out to him if you ever have any questions. Today, we are here to look at the North Main Street area, the area that many of us refer to on the other side of Stop and Shop or Town Pantry, also known as the White Hen, all the way up the North Main Street towards the Wilburn Line. We received $30,000 appropriation from Town Meeting to take this on, and in response, we have contracted with the regional planning organization MAPC and are excited to work with Josh Fialla, who is here and who was just speaking. His background is in architecture and planning, and we feel he's an excellent fit for this exciting visionary study. We look forward to the public's input in this process and seeing what visioning the town has for this area. Thank you so much for all your participation. We really look forward to hearing from you.
Great. Thank you, Heather. And welcome again, everyone. So the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, as Heather just mentioned, is the regional planning agency for the Boston Metropolitan Area, and that includes Winchester. We assist municipalities throughout the region with technical planning studies such as this one. Our team in this case includes myself, and Heather described my background a little bit, thankfully, so that's great. And we also have Yolando Spinola on this meeting, who's one of our community engagement specialists. Some of you might have heard from Yolando as we've been reaching out and trying to get in touch with stakeholders of the North Main Street area. So Yolando's working with us. We also have a land use intern who's been hard at work producing some of the analyses that you see this evening, Russell Wong. So we're happy to have have our team working with you all. And and if you're not familiar with MAPC, you can take a look at our website, mapc.org, and and take a look at the breadth of work that we do in service of our 101 cities and towns. So tonight, we're going to introduce what the study is about, provide some analysis to help us understand and think about North Main Street in the context of this study, and work with you all to define a vision for North Main Street. We'll close with a brief outline of the next steps for this process and keep you informed of how you can stay a part of it as we move along. In our first Zoom poll of the evening, so we will, one of the ways that we're engaging in this meeting, since we're not together physically, is through some Zoom polls. So hopefully, you've maybe used these before. If not, they're they're pretty straightforward. A Zoom poll will pop up on your screen when I initiate it in a few minutes, and then you can respond to those and submit your answer, and then we'll be able to see the results and share them back with you all. So the first is a little bit of a test just to get us rolling, but it's a simple one. And it's basically asking you to tell us about yourself. So we've introduced you to the team and who's involved on the the town side of things, but we'd like to hear is what you what you consider your primary relationship to North Main Street. So let me launch that poll for you now. So it should should be on your screen now, and if you just click on one of the options that best fit your relationship to North Main Street, so whether you're a resident directly on North Main Street, a resident on an abutting side street, a resident of the area in general, a resident of the town even further field, a business owner on North Main Street, a property owner on North Main Street, a patron or visitor to North Main Street, or a town meeting member, and a town board committee or staff member, if that's your your preference to choose that, and other. So you only have the option to choose one. So whichever one you feel most strongly your your affiliation is, you can choose that one. And I'm sure there's there's other affiliations too, but we only get to populate 10 answers apart of part of the Zoom constraints here. So it looks like we have many people have voted, but if you could get a chance, that would be great with 30 of 39 participating presently. Just give it a few more seconds. All right, looks like that's all we're going to get. So let me end the poll, and I can share it back to you, and hopefully you should be able to see those results. So that's the results I see are 32% identifying the largest group as residents on an abutting side street. It's like the next largest categories are just in general, a resident of the town at 16% or a property owner at 16%, then a town meeting member at 13%. Then you can see some of the other percentages. So thank you for doing that and participating in that way. It's helpful to know who's out there and who's who's a part of our event this evening. It's good to see a good cross-section and distribution across those categories. So let's get into what this meeting is about and what the study is about. So let's let's start here with the master plan. So the Town of Winchester recently completed an award-winning townwide master plan. This plan looked at the entire town and identified actions to be undertaken over the next 10 years to help guide the town toward your shared vision of the future. One of those overall action areas was defined as balancing development with preservation. Specifically, Goal A1 states encourage more commercial mixed-use and compact development in areas that support economic vibrancy, including strategic development parcels in the town center and identified evolving opportunity areas. So North Main Street area that we're talking about specifically here is an evolving opportunity area. So in this, on the page, what you see is actually Strategy A1.2.1 of the master plan. And that's to create an area plan for the North Main Street corridor to envision public realm improvements and to identify development opportunities, zoning amendments, and design guidelines to help shape future development. The details mentioned point toward physical improvements, less restrictive zoning with development incentives, increased housing choice, increased commercial and jobs base, and mixed-use residential. And that all of these options should be grounded in a community-led process. So this this tonight is is a part of that process. Here's a diagram from the master plan that shows the areas of North Main Street. The evolving opportunity area is that with the red tone on it, the red the red gradation. So this study is really a continuation of the town's proactive planning and an implementation action of the master plan. The overall objectives are to develop a vision for North Main Street that can help to define zoning recommendations, design guidelines, and public realm improvements. Our scope and work plan is designed to enable us to meet these objectives through a process that is driven by data and analysis and combined with robust community input. So this evening is a part of that gathering of input. We've also been working to develop stakeholder interviews along the way as well, which I'll touch on in a moment. The process is designed to provide recommendations to the Planning Board in about the month of June, with two community meetings to get us from there to here or from here to there, including this evening's meeting and a second meeting, which will be towards the end of April or the beginning of May. We're coordinating with the Planning Board along the way, and the Planning Board will be the body to advance recommendations from this process, such as taking zoning recommendations to town meeting. As I mentioned, as part of this process, we're reaching out to discuss North Main Street with stakeholders individually or in small groups. If you'd like to speak with us in in that setting or have a suggestion of someone who we should reach out to, we'd be all ears, and we'd love it if you could send Yolando an email at the email address on the screen. Maybe maybe Yolando can also put his email in the the chat for us too, so you can have that easily clickable link. So we've been working on those. We'll be continuing to work on those over the next couple of months and are happy to speak with anyone that would like to share those perspectives with us in a more one-on-one setting. Our study area is defined by the zoning map of Winchester. So you can see that official map on the screen. And of course, the area that we're focused on is that boxed in with the yellow rectangle there. Here's a zoom in of that area. We're focused on the General Business District 2 and General Business District 3 properties along North Main Street, which total 76 parcels. You can see those in the red and the orange. GBD 2, General Business District 2, is the southern half of North Main Street between Skilling's Road and Swanton Street. You see aerial of that portion of the street. GBD 3 is the northern half of North Main Street from about Swanton Street to the Wilburn City Line. And here's an aerial of that portion of the street as well. So we're going to have a series of slides after this that go into some more detailed analysis of those parcels in the area of the study. But before we do, we just thought we'd pause and ask if anyone has any questions in general about the study, the the basics of which we just outlined for you. So again, the the options here, if you do want to ask a question, you can put it into the chat, type it in, or you could use the raise your hand function, or you can literally raise your hand on the screen, and we will unmute folks and ask them to ask the question. I'll pause for just one moment longer to let any of those functions happen, but I'm at this moment seeing none. All right. Well, there will be plenty of time to ask questions as we move along as well. So I'll just keep on rolling. So we'd like to present some of the analysis of North Main Street to help us better understand what is there today and kind of give us a solid footing in terms of the types of data that we're looking at. We'll start off pretty general and then get more detailed in this next series of series of slides. So first, there are just some street view shots that show the street character, an eclectic mix of uses and buildings that you all probably know very well. This is the northern side of Main Street up near the Wilburn City Line. And then moving down south toward the intersection with Swanton Street. And down south further still, all the way down to Skilling's Road and that intersection. Based on review of some of the past planning studies and documents, these are the types of improvements that have been contemplated on North Main Street. So adding vitality to the commercial corridor, additional restaurant or retail uses specifically, mixing residential uses into the corridor above the ground floor, potentially adding affordable housing units that could count towards the town's subsidized housing inventory, retaining the character of the corridor, preserving key buildings and overall development patterns, and improving pedestrian safety and walkability. So before we go too deep into the analysis, we'd love to get some additional perspectives from you all about what you would describe as your vision for North Main Street. So I have a second poll which will help with that. It's broken down into a few different components. So I have three questions as part of this poll. Let me launch that poll now, and I'll walk you through it. So you should see that pull up on the screen now. The three questions are: What is the most important aspect of North Main Street? And we've listed a few options there, and you're able to choose one of those options. The second question is: How close is North Main Street today compared to what you'd like it to be? And you can choose one of those options, which are a gradation of from very close to not close at all. And then the last of those three questions is: What is missing from North Main Street? And that's a multiple choice. You can put in multiple answers for that. So any of those that you think feel are missing, you can select. So give people a couple of minutes to complete that. For those watching the video at home, I'll say at this moment too, Yolando and I have prepared a companion Qualtric survey, which is an online survey, which has these same questions in them. And so we'll, when the video of this presentation is posted online on the town's website, we'll also make sure the link for that poll is posted along with it. And so other members of the community who are viewing this after the live presentation this evening can actually take and respond to these same questions through that poll, and we'll review and receive those as well. So it does look like we also have a hand raised at this one. So maybe Russell's, Russell with your iPad. I will ask you to unmute, and then you can do that and ask a question.
Thank you, Josh. I I just had a question regarding the reinvestment and renovation of the North Main Street corridor. Will Winchester be hiring architecture, urban design or urban planning and landscape architecture firms?
For what for what aspect of the?
All aspects. So, well, landscape architecture, maybe not on the forefront, but urban planning and also architectural firms. In other words, if there are builders or slash developers who will be involved in the renovation and reinvestment of the North Main Street corridor, will they be consulting with architecture firms, urban plannings, and landscape architectural firms?
Okay, I I think I let me just try to answer that, and I'll see if if I understood that correctly. So so we are in our planning agency, MAPC. We do have myself included architects and urban designers. And so we're providing some of that expertise to the town in this planning study, which will frame some recommendations regarding the regulations of the the corridor, so zoning and and design guidelines, and framing some other improvements which might occur in the corridor. But then there will be other aspects to the improvements of the corridor, which will involve private investments, private developers, and they will also be hiring, I would imagine, their own architects, urban designers, or landscape architects as part of their consultant teams to do the work on their specific projects. So we're we're framing through our expertise sort of the front end of those longer-term development processes and improvement processes through the regulatory environment, which we will, our recommendations are pointed towards the town. So the record, the types of changes that the town can make through its own regulations to set the stage for potential improvements, many of which will be through private investments as the corridor evolves over time. Some of them would also be potentially through public investments in the street or streetscape, and then those will also have would have an additional design process which may involve civil engineers, landscape architects, or others. So I hopefully that answers or gets at the the overall question that you posed.
Thank you.
No problem. So that's given us time to, looks like, get most of the responses to this poll in. So I'll end this poll and share those results quickly with you. So it looks like we had 32 people join us in the voting on this visioning poll. So the most important aspect of North Main Street people voted on was that it supports small businesses and economic activity. And that got 34% of the vote, followed by it has a variety of activities that work well together, and that's 22%. Let me now to the second question. So how close is North Main Street today compared to what you would like it to be? In the majority, 66% responded not close. It could benefit from substantial changes. So that helps us helps us a lot to actually understand the order of magnitude of the types of changes that we might be considering as part of this process. And then the third question, what is missing from North Main Street? People could select multiple answers for this response. More street trees and landscaping was tied with safer walking and biking, followed by more housing and additional small businesses and services. So thank you for those results. And again, we'll have a similar, a parallel poll, which is available to others to help fill in our understanding of where people stand on those questions. All right. So now we're going to get into a little more detailed analysis on the corridor to help us all understand what's out there today. So the diagram on the screen, just to orient you to it, because this is, this is a a diagram that we're going to be using for the next few analyses. So on the left side of your screen is oriented toward the city of Wilburn Line. Down, as it slants down to the bottom right side of the screen, it is the intersection of Skilling's Road and Main Street, and the the main street along the middle is Main Street. We do have the roads labeled on the the following slides. That should be a little more helpful. But on this slide, what we're seeing are the GBD 2 and GBD 3 zoning districts and the parcels that are included in them, and some general characteristics about the parcels. So they're both in terms of planning studies that we do around the region. I would I would characterize these as both relatively modest areas in terms of the overall acreage, the total acreage of the districts. It's not, not a huge amount of land, but it is a critical amount of land for the Town of Winchester for sure. GBD 3 is slightly larger overall and has slightly larger parcels on average, just under a half acre in size on average. And then GBD 2 is just under a quarter acre in size on average for the parcels. GBD 2 has slightly more owner-occupied properties. That's a I'll explain our our approach to owner-occupied properties in a few slides. And then it does have more buildings and it has more assessed value, probably connected to the fact that it has more buildings. So here's that similar diagram. You can see the street names on this one. So Main Street's in the middle, flowing from the bottom or the top left from the Wilburn Line down to the bottom right to Skilling's Road. This is a diagram that shows the land use in the corridor. Yellow is residential. Those parcels are distributed throughout the corridor. You can see them not concentrated in any one area. Commercial is red and is the most consistent color across Main Street. Pink is mixed use, so more than one use is typically residential and commercial on the same property. Blue is a utility property, and gray are vacant, so no buildings on the gray. And you can see those same uses arranged by percentage of land totaling in the parcels we're looking at. Commercial properties are the dominant parcel or the dominant use, with 60% of the total uses followed by residential at 16%. One of the things that's helpful to consider about the the real estate economic development and evolution of corridors like this is to think about the relationship of the building value to the land value, just as an approximation of of how much investment has occurred on a particular property. So those properties which are colored in green on this diagram have a land value which is higher than the building value, meaning that the the land which the the building is sitting on is worth more. The properties shown in red here have a building which is more valuable than the land. So typically, a larger building, a building which is perhaps newer or consists of a more substantial investment. So those those are just interesting aspects of the the corridor. And this is all based upon the town's assessors. So those, those are just interesting aspects of the corridor. And this is all based upon the town's assessors data. Another interesting aspect of the corridor is to look at the year built data. So this diagram is a gradation of year built. The darker tones of blue are the more recent the building was built. The variety of old and new buildings is pretty evenly distributed along North Main Street, giving the street its unique eclectic feel, I think in part. This is one of the things contributing to it. The largest share of year built dates ranges from the nineteen sixty-nine to nineteen forty category with thirty percent of the properties within that category. So that's, the others are in one of the other categories. And if you take, take that nineteen sixty-nine to nineteen forty range, which actually is in the middle of our ranges there, the other percentages of properties are actually pretty evenly distributed newer and older. If you use that range as the midpoint. There's also been, of those older properties that were just highlighted, about twenty-seven of those properties along North Main Street, those shown in blue on the screen now, have been inventoried as a historic asset in the Massachusetts Cultural Resource Information System, or MACRS for short. One property not in our study area, but directly on North Main Street at the corner of Russell Road is on the National Register. That property is shown in red. But it's not in the GBD three zoning district. Building height is shown on the screen now, so the darker the orange or brown tone, the taller the building is. Building height ranges from one to three stories on the North Main Street corridor today. A few taller buildings are located further north along the street. The most prominent height on the North Main Street corridor today is two and a half stories. So that's the, the height which shows up most frequently. And that's about twenty-eight percent of the buildings on North Main Street are two and a half stories today. And then twenty-four percent are one story and twenty percent are three story. Then density is another interesting land use characteristic that we're taking a look at. So density measures how much building development is on a given property. The darker pink tone in this case is more dense. So the density measure that we're depicting is called floor area ratio, FAR. And the floor area ratio is a measurement of the total building area divided by the total land area of a property. And that gives you a density of that area. The most prominent density range that shows up in the North Main Street area today is from point five FAR to point one FAR, which is, I would consider that a relatively low FAR for a commercial corridor of this nature. But not, you know, relative to more auto oriented places which have smaller buildings and larger parking lots. It's, it's about about average, about normal for that type of development. So that, that category of point five to point one represents seventy-five percent of the properties that were studying here in the North Main Street corridor. And then looking at the parking relative to that density. So typically the more parking that's provided, the less building area that is provided. It's a, it's a relationship between the two. And so the, the coloring here shows the darker red has our properties with more parking. So fifty plus more spaces. The medical office building up towards the north end is the most parked property, has the most parking spaces. Then you can see the ranges of, of parking throughout the corridor. This diagram shows the properties that are more likely than not to be owner occupied based upon the assessor's data. This is a quick look. It may not be totally accurate, but it basically compares the address of the property to the owner's mailing address as listed with the assessor's data. So if those two match, then we consider that pretty clearly an owner occupied property is what you see in green. And then if that, that mailing address to property address does not match, then we've colored it the pink tone, which may indicate that, not in all cases, but it may indicate that the owner does not occupy that property, but is, is owner either in another city or town in Massachusetts or another state altogether and is renting the property to another user. And in some cases, it might just be the fact that the, the owner does occupy the property, but has their mail sent to some other building for another reason. And that was about, so that calculation showed about fifteen percent of the properties are owner occupied properties. So many of the previous analyses are inputs into this final diagram that shows an approximation of the potential for change on properties on North Main Street. This is not a diagram necessarily showing what should change, but rather what is more or less likely to change based upon building and property characteristics. It's not a perfect science, but it's, it does give an indication of the amount of opportunity in the corridor. This shows a pretty even split amongst those three categories. But I would actually say that this, this compilation of these characteristics shows a decent amount of opportunity in the North Main Street corridor for some change or evolution. About twenty-nine percent of the land area is categorized as a near term redevelopment opportunity. So those would be potentially the opportunity, the, the buildings which are less valuable than their land. They are smaller, less dense and perhaps older. So those are the properties in green. The properties in yellow are longer term potential redevelopment opportunities, and that's about forty-one percent of the land by total land area in the corridor. And those are properties which similarly have lower relation, lower ratios of the building value to the land value. They may be less dense buildings or one story buildings, but they may have a use which is less likely to change. For example, a bank or a franchise of some kind. And those, those are typically kind of set up and have their, their, you know, real estate needs worked out and may not be looking for redevelopment type change. And then those properties which are showing up as red, where change is unlikely, represent about thirty percent of the property in North Main Street corridor. And the unlikely are, are those which have seen redevelopment recently or new investment recently or are, have a high building value relative to the land value. It's not to say that they can't change. They may, they may have a proposal that's way in the wings that we don't know about yet, that is, is there. But just from what we can see of these characteristics, we would classify it that way. Again, this isn't a perfect science. Don't, don't take this as, as a Bible, but it's an indication to help us think about the evolution of corridors that, and how economic redevelopment, real estate redevelopment occurs. So just wrapping up this, this round of analyses, then we'll have some more interaction with each other. The North Main Street walkability, I would, I would say is, is decent. So there are, it's only a mile end to end, which isn't that far to walk. So ten minutes to get to about the midpoint at Bellino Park. There is a park there which is, is nice, an asset for pedestrians. And then another ten minutes to get down to the other end and get to Elliot Park. There are connections for bikes on the newly, newly completed Tri-Community Greenway, which just touch, comes near the study area here. And overall, the walk score, if I can find it here in my notes. The walk score, the area which measured walkability and the ability to get to destinations safely on foot is a sixty-four today, which includes somewhat walkable based upon that metric, meaning some errands can be accomplished on foot. So walkability isn't, isn't too bad today. There are sidewalks on both sides of Main Street today. And then the bicycle lane on the Greenway. And there are crosswalks which don't occur at every intersection, but do occur at regular intervals. There's potentially some room for improvement there, but there are marked crosswalks present along the entire length of North Main Street. And the last thing to mention in terms of walkability and pedestrian safety are curb cuts. You can see, it's a little hard to see on the screen, but there, in yellow, the curb cuts are, have been marked. And there's some areas where frequent and wide curb cuts do, curb cuts do show up. And those are highlighted with the red tones there. So every time a curb is broken by a driveway, a parking lot or access road, it creates a potential for conflict between cars and people or bikes and people. So curb cuts are something to look at and, and understand the, the width of the dimensions and frequency. So I'll pause there. That was a lot of analyses and information that we just went through pretty quickly. So I'll just see, I'm probably have missed some comments or questions in the chat, or also if people would like to raise a hand, which you can do if you have the Zoom controls, which are typically on the bottom of your screen. You can open your chat window and then through the chat window, I believe you can raise your hand, or is it through the participants window?
Yep.
Yeah, through, through the participants window, if you open that option up, you can use the option under more, I think it probably shows up to raise your hand. Or it might just be there for you as the participants. So Yolando, do you have any, see any questions that I should refer to?
There is one question from Sherry. Does the concept of walkability include no, no shade given to, given the hotter weather?
Yeah, so walkability does relate to the landscape for sure and street trees and shade trees. And I didn't get a chance yet to look, but we can pull up some data MAPC has relative to the heat island effect. And that's where effectively you're looking at the amount of sun absorption that occurs in areas that have a high amount of pavement. And they have elevated temperatures relative to their surrounding areas which are more green. I would guess you, you might see some elevated temperatures on the North Main Street corridor, given the characteristics we just walked through. But we, we could take a look at that and, and street trees would add to the comfort or other shading devices would add to the comfort of pedestrians, particularly in the summer months. I see also a question about any traffic analysis. Unfortunately, in this case, we don't have much, by the way, of traffic analysis in, in our scope. But we'll, we are happy to hear about traffic concerns or issues that people have been experiencing on the corridor and see what, what kind of thoughts or expertise we could lend to that. But typically, in processes such as this one, oftentimes the, the specific traffic considerations are, are, I guess interrogated at, at a time when there is a specific project, development project which is being contemplated. And it's difficult to understand in a more broad and general way, what those specific traffic impacts might be. So that's, that's one, one comment I would add there. Others, anyone else want to? I don't see any hands at this point. Other hand?
I just popped up.
Sherry, yes. Let, let us see if we can unmute you.
I just passed her to me.
Yeah, I'm curious as to, so North Main Street is, regardless of whether there's new development along it, it is an entry corridor into Winchester for a lot of traffic just passing through Winchester, and that's not likely to change. So I would affect, I would expect that to, knowing just the current level of traffic, should play a major part into what can be expected as to the livability along Main Street.
Yes, that's a great point. We'll see what, what we can find by way of existing data in terms of traffic counts on the street today. But that, that is an excellent point. It's, it's a gateway and thoroughfare into the city and, and it will remain as such.
And there is a question around the park areas, if there's any improvement plans for the two park areas along the route.
I had, I might not be best positioned to answer that, but I have not heard of any specific improvements in what we've learned so far. It's not to say that there aren't plans afoot, but I guess maybe I would turn that, excuse me, turn that question around a little bit and say, are, are there specific park improvements that you would like to see at the parks that we should know about? And, and if so, sort of what are the nature of those improvements or, how, how are those parks lacking in how they're servicing the community? Because that's something we would like to know and integrate into our thinking for this study.
Just to say quickly, there's no specific plans, but I, but there are certainly residents that are interested in, in doing, of expanding, expanding those parks, not necessarily the space, but the, the amount of, of options that you can do in this passive, path for passive recreation. I don't know who asked that, that one question. I just wanted to say that there's no, there's no known plans that are out for those parks at this, at this time, but there is interest.
Thanks, Brian, for clarifying that. So give one last call for questions at this moment. You'll, you'll get another chance. We have one more section of this presentation to get through. Alright, seeing none, we will keep moving along. Thank you for those. That's very helpful. And I'm glad to see people are engaging with us. It's always, it's never that great when people are just sitting blank staring us. Alright, so the last question before we move on to the next section is another Zoom poll. So given everything we just went through, I would just like to see and have you reflect on what you thought the most important component of all of those analyses were. So let me bring that up. And this is another one where you just get to choose the one option. So we're making you really prioritize here. So it just lists the analyses which we just went through. So land use, building to land value, year built, historical survey, the building height, density, parking or owner occupied. So I'm not sure if people have an opinion about that. There, there may not be. Looks like we're getting some votes in. So it looks like about half, half of the participants have voted. Give it just a couple of seconds more. Right, we're up to sixty-five percent, which is pretty good. Alright, so let me share those results back to you and I'll explain them. So it looks like potential change was the viewed as most important, which I, I would think that's an important one as well. Forty-four percent of you thought that. And then the next was a series of ties. So we've got a bunch of thirteen percent. So we have density, building height and land use all together, which are all critical components of how the character of the corridor meshes together. So thank you for those insights. That helps us to understand where, where you're thinking too. So let me stop sharing that, move on to this last section of the presentation. And this last section has a few more Zoom polls, so you'll get a few rapid-fire Zoom polls in this part. But we wanted to, in this last section, gather your input into defining a vision for North Main Street with some very specific items. So since one of the major components of our work is zoning recommendations based upon the community vision that we're helping to define with you all this evening, we are framing the discussion in this last section around the current zoning for North Main Street. So a lot of these slides will have a lot of information on them. It's just a reflection of what's in the zoning today. I don't plan to go through all of it in too much detail this evening, but a part of our work is reviewing the zoning in great detail relative to the vision and making recommendations about where those regulations should head. So again, we're looking at the General Business District, GBD III, General Business District, GBD II. Then there's also a overlay district in the North Main Street area called the Village Center Overlay. So I'll explain a little bit of the details around those three items. So this is one of those slides where I will not get into all the things that are on it, but just give you a flavor of the, one of the things that zoning regulates, if you're not familiar with this local bylaw, is the use that can occur on a property. So you see the uses that are permitted by right, permitted as under special permit, and not permitted or prohibited in the GBD III district. So these are among other regulations. And what you can see on screen for GBD III, I think what's notable in this case as not permitted are retail and restaurant uses. Those popped out to me. There might be others that jump out to you here, but these are, again, details that we won't dwell on too much, but they're basically set up a poll question for you all. And this is a little bit different set of use regulations for GBD II. There are some subtleties between the two districts. And you can take a brief look at what's permitted by right and under special permit and not permitted in GBD II, which is the more southern district of the two. I see a question, is industrial use a component in the North Main Street reinvestment renovation? I think that specific uses, we're trying to gather in the next poll question actually, about what people would like to see, what is the vision of, that the community of Winchester has for North Main Street that may or may not involve industrial uses, but if it does, then we can help the town figure out a way to seamlessly blend that use into the corridor. It may not be a part of the vision. I don't know. That's up to you all. So let's get into that then. This poll question is about those uses and asking, it doesn't have to match what we just saw in terms of zoning, but it's more about what you want to see in the corridor. Because as a part of our work here, if there are uses which are inconsistent with the town's vision, this will be a part of what we're doing, is recommending that some of those use regulations be changed. So this poll is what uses would you like to see more on North Main Street? And then a second question, what uses would you like to see less of on Main Street? So what's more of, what's less of? And let me launch that poll now for you. So I will say a few things here to help us. And on these questions, we were a little bit limited, again, by the 10 options we have. So additionally, we'd invite you to chat, to type in the chat. If you say, if there are more uses that we haven't listed in the poll that you want to see, just type them in the chat, but just make sure to note if you'd like to be more of that use or less of that use. So you could say more-dash-industrial, based upon what Russell mentioned in the chat, if that's something you want to see more of or less of. So on your screen now, you should be able to be voting for a range of uses you might like to see more of. So we've listed a few different types of residential uses. We've listed some specific uses which showed up in the zoning uses which we just saw briefly on the screen. Some business uses, some auto-oriented uses, as there are some on the corridor today. Outdoor spaces, smaller outdoor spaces to complement the Belino Park, for example. And then almost, I think they are a mirror image of the same types of uses that you, I mean, those same uses could be something you'd like to see less of. So those are the other question in this two-question poll. And feel free to add some in the chat if we haven't, we've certainly not covered the full universe of uses which you could want to see more of. So it looks like a little over half of you have responded now. So give it just another minute or two. We're up to almost 70%, so that was a big, big jump. All right, so final clicks, final answers? All right, I'm going to close the poll now. If you get cut off, you can certainly put it into the chat, or if you think of more that you'd like. Share these results back to you and take a look myself. So in terms of what uses you would like to see more of on North Main Street, it looks like there are two, I guess, three major vote-earning responses. The biggest was 79% mixed use with residential and business uses. So that would likely be a vertical mixing of uses with the residential uses above those other uses. And small outdoor spaces to see more of that, and restaurants at 55% and 58% respectively on those last two. And retail stores, looks like it's the next highest in multifamily dwelling units after retail stores. And then what you'd like to see less of on North Main Street, it looks like the biggest vote-getter there was auto services, repair, and fuel, is how we phrased it. And that was 68%, followed by multifamily dwellings at 21%, personal services at 16%, and then it looks like there's a few at 11%, which include retail stores, mixed use with residential businesses, and townhouses. So thank you for that. We will unpack all of that relative to the current patterns of the district which we saw and the zoning characteristics, which we also reviewed briefly. So let me stop sharing this. So as I transition to the next part here, I see a few questions in the chat. So how are small outdoor spaces funded? That can actually be a part of zoning. Sometimes you can, for maybe as an incentive for a more dense development, or larger development, or some sort of incentive-based relationship, you could ask for a developer to carve out a portion of their property as a small parklet or outdoor space. And that sort of relationship can sometimes work out through the zoning or design guidelines. And then also, so that would be funded privately in some cases. In other cases, it could be funded as part of public realm improvements publicly. And then please define personal services. So those are small businesses which are typically geared toward beauty services. So it'd be like barber's salons, nail salons, personal services for accountants. I, well, there's a little bit of fine line between personal services and professional services. So accountants might actually fall on the professional services side. But it's more related to services of the, you know, self, of betterment of the body and things like that. All right, so let me move along. Another aspect of the zoning is, are the dimensional regulations. And the dimensional regulations regulate the size and character of development. You can see the two North Main Street characteristics shown here on the summary table from the zoning bylaw. So for example, the front yard must have a setback of 10 feet. The rear yard must have a setback of 15 feet. No minimum open space or green space is required. That goes to the question that we just mentioned from the chat. That could be a requirement, or it could be sort of an optional situation that's related to some sort of development incentive. But requirements of open space are not unheard of in zoning. And then it also defines the maximum building height as three stories or up to 45 feet. Three stories and up to 45 feet, I should say. It can never exceed three stories. So based upon these dimensional regulations, we just have a few questions which relate to those characteristics for you to weigh in on. The first is, are the buildings setback from the street an appropriate distance? So that might be just the way the corridor feels to you today, or it could be those specific numbers we just referenced, whichever you feel like. And then the other is, what is an appropriate height range for buildings on North Main Street? So let me pull that poll up and get your feedback on those. Okay, so those are launched. So the options for the setback are that the current setbacks are, today are about right. The setbacks should be larger, meaning the buildings are farther from the street. Setbacks should be smaller, meaning the buildings should be closer to the street. And they have no opinion about setbacks. In the height, it's more measured of stories. So do you think the most appropriate height is one-to-two-story, two-to-three-story, three-to-four-story, four-story or more? Or you have no opinion about the height? And I see a couple of comments or questions in the chat. So we'll just take those while you're filling in the poll. So one is, is there a universal street setback for aesthetic integrity, congruence, and value? I don't know if that's like a general urban design question. I would say that setbacks in general vary on the context and type of place, of course. I think in general, it's good to have building setbacks cluster within, you know, a five or 10-foot range so that there is some consistency about the front yard and what's happening there, or the relationship to the sidewalk. But there is some variation that typically occurs. But you don't want it to vary from like a zero-lotline building to a 50-foot front yard in general, just because that does start to create some pretty strong inconsistencies. But there are other districts where that sort of thing works. So it's all few and far between. It's kind of difficult to generalize that. But one of the things we will look at here is, what are the setback beyond the zoning? What are the characteristics today in terms of how the buildings are positioned on the properties? And what that, how that relates to the setback figures? And there's another question, or more of a comment, more concerned about the setback to the residential area. The zoning does have an additional residential setback, which I think in our case, in these districts, is defined as the same distance, 15 feet, but could be set as a greater distance. Though I'm not sure, given the configuration of many of these parcels, if that would be a good idea in terms of the potential for investment on the properties. If you make that setback from a budding residential district where there are smaller properties such as there are in this district, it can severely limit the ability to redevelop a property. So it depends on what the goals are for the district. If redevelopment is potentially a goal, then we might want to look out for that. Another comment, the building height should relate to setbacks. Yeah, there's a fair amount of sort of urban design work and studies about the proper relationships between heights and setbacks, and what makes for a pleasant-feeling place or corridor. All right, so all of my rambling based upon the chat questions has caused us to get 75% of the vote in. We'll close the poll. Show those results back to you all. So the leading answers are close for setbacks. So setbacks should be larger, was the leading, at 38%. Followed closely thereafter by setbacks should be smaller, 35%. With the next highest being setbacks are about right. Maybe those two also balance out to tell us that setbacks are about right. And then the building height, two-to-three-story, looks to be the favorite at 57%. Followed by three-to-four-story at 22%. And it looks like, given the triangulation on those two, that the maximum height of three stories may be about the sweet spot of what people are telling us there. We'll stop sharing that. Great, thank you for participating in all these questions. So there are also some, I won't dwell on these either, but just thought I would share them, some additional notes about the dimensional regulations for the district, including some landscape requirements, different requirements for types of uses. Again, these are details that I don't want to dwell on, but on this one, I do want to dwell a little bit, which is the density descriptions for the district. So the density in the zoning is also measured by the measure we used earlier, which is floor area ratio, FAR. And it's defined right now as a floor area ratio of 1.0. And that's a maximum for GBD II and GBD III. There's an incentive increase up to 1.25 if affordable housing is included as a component of the development at a minimum of 15% of the dwelling units. So I think that's a, you know, that's a good trade-off for the town in terms of providing a little bit more density for affordable housing. I'm not sure if that provision has been utilized in the past or not. That's something we can follow up on. But so density is 1.0, which if you recall, is actually quite a bit lower. I mean, it's quite a bit higher, that allowed FAR of 1.0 than what the typical density was on those parcels when we measured that in the diagram earlier. So let's touch on density then. Let me get my, oops, I lost my poll. Here we are. So the first question is about the density itself. What density is most appropriate on North Main Street? And then should affordable housing be required to be included? Which, it is not today. It is there as incentivized through that density incentive, but is not required. So I'm launching the poll now. Oh, I've been corrected. So affordable housing is required today. Thank you for that clarification. Stand corrected on that. 10% for projects of six or more units. So the questions on the screen, what is an appropriate density on North Main Street? Less density than today, the same amount, more density than today, or even more than currently allowed? Or you have no opinion about the density? And then should affordable housing be required to be included? Responses are no. Yes, for about 10% of new units, or yes, about 15%. Yes, for about 10% of new units, or yes, about 15% of new units. Or you have no opinion about that? And then also there's a question about design guidelines in this set. Which is what should design guidelines address on North Main Street? And you can choose multiple answers for that one. We get the the position of the building and parking on the property, overall scale of the building and its massing, building facade and features, roof slope and features, features as they relate to historic structures, streetscape and landscape features, parking design and features, or outdoor open space design and features, or other. And if you have an other, please write your thoughts in the chat. Because we'd like to know specifically if there's something, an item which you'd love to see covered in design guidelines, that would be very helpful to know.
Josh, Hank does did ask, can you give a couple of examples currently on Main Street about scale of far equals one building?
Yes. I can. But it'd be easiest for me to refer to that diagram, which is back on a previous slide. Let me see if I can bring that up real quick. So it's like we've got about 66% of the votes in currently. So if you keep going on that. Number 75%, thank you. I'll just give it a couple more minutes while I look for this file to look at. Yeah, on the, as you are moving north on Main Street from the Skilling's Road intersection on the left, most of those initial properties within our study area are are in the FAR 1.0 range, except for the funeral home, which is right there as well. But most of those, I would say, first half a dozen properties are of that type of density. Alright, let me close this poll. Looks like all of you who are answered will have done so. Can show the results briefly. We're almost there. This is, I thank you all for participating so much in this meeting. So here are the results. Density on North Main Street. Looks like the leading response, 47% was more density than today. Which I think I think is promising, given how all these pieces are starting to fit together potentially. And just as a side note, maybe editorial comment, I I think density, if done well, is an easier way to get more economic sort of viable redevelopment into a property as as compared to something like building height. It's it's less noticeable than a taller building as a more dense building. You don't necessarily walk around a district and say, like, oh, that's a FAR of 1.5, or that's a FAR of two, or that's 16 units per acre, that sort of thing. It's just not as easily recognizable metric. But it does help in terms of financial viability. Should affordable housing be required to be included? Looks like the leading answer there was yes. At 42% of you said 15% of new units, which would be a little bit of step up from the current requirement, as Brian clarified for me. And then another 22% said yes, at about 10%, and another 22% said no. And then in terms of the design guideline characteristics, streetscape and landscape features are the leading response, 69%. So guiding new investments and development to contribute to a positive streetscape along the corridor is something that's it's 100% within the possibilities of design guidelines. And then overall building scale and massing is the second vote getter, which is also well within the purview of those types of guidance. And then outdoor open space and design and features follows that. Alright, so that's all very helpful feedback as to guide where we head with this work. We have just a couple more things to cover here, and then we'll wrap up for the evening. The last is, or one of the last things is parking requirements. And you can see those on the screen, and these are measured by use and fall within each zoning district. So there might be some variation from zoning district to zoning district, but if it's a residential use, it's typically two spaces per dwelling unit. There's variation in the amount of square feet per parking space required for a variety of commercial or institutional type of uses. Now you can see some of that variation on the screen now with the differences between retail stores of different sizes or personal services or restaurants are measured by seat. So not to get into the the nitty gritty of how many exactly are required per each different type of use, but more generally, what is an appropriate amount of parking to require on North Main Street? And this is measured more as what's currently provided. So how do you feel about parking that's currently on North Main Street? Should more parking than is currently provided? Be provided the same amount? Less parking? Should there be no minimum in terms of how much parking is required? Or do you have no opinion about parking requirements? Just as I'll use I'll use this moment also to give some editorial comments and and a little bit of insight into where planning thinking is these days. And some, not everywhere, but it's becoming more common that communities are considering reconsidering parking minimums and that parking is not the best use of land. Of course, parking is needed, particularly in more suburban communities such as Winchester. You do have some transit access, but it's not the case that you can do everything without a car. But some places are noticing that parking is not free, of course, and parking has costs both for development and reinvestment in properties. And so requiring a absolute minimum may not be the right great decision in all cases. But that's also not not where every community wants to go. Yes, and as a comment just pointed out too, it certainly does depend on the use, the proximity to transit, the walkability of the place in general, and the surrounding destinations and mix of uses. So there's a wide range of considerations there. So it looks like we have 65% of the vote in. So we can just about close this one up. Alright, I'm ending the poll now. Sharing those results back to you. So it looks looks like a little less determinant results on this one, pretty even split between more parking than currently provided at 25%, the same amount of parking is currently provided 25% and less parking than currently provided at 25%. So whereas the shared voice in the room this evening might have given us a little firmer direction on some of these items. I would say the jury's out on this one potentially. So we'll explore parking as it relates to all of the sort of vision and ambitions as we start to articulate those for the district. Alright, moving right along. I did mention earlier the Village Center overlay district. And the intention of this overlay district was to enhance walkability and pedestrian orientation of the district. So it doesn't have too many differences. It does reduce the maximum front yard setback to encourage active pedestrian oriented uses and sort of frame the street edge and frontage of the the properties. It does also provide some relief on the parking requirements, which also would would improve potential for walkability. But this is a is a tool which could be used and potentially potentially improved in the the set of recommendations that come from this study. So I guess this is a softball question for you all, given some of the comments we've seen already this evening. But this last one is, would you be supportive of a safer walking and biking environment on North Main Street? Let me just pull that poll up for you. My answers are yes, more improvements are needed, no, improvements are not necessary, or you have no opinion about walking and biking. So it looks like that that one went very fast. So we have 75% of the votes in. So I'll close that now. Alright. 79% agree with the walk. Okay. So with that, let's, we'll pause here, and I know that we've covered a lot this evening, but wanted to provide an opportunity for any other questions or comments that people would like to provide, and we'll recognize you as you doing the things that we've been describing. So raise you raise you, use the raise your hand function, raise your hand in your video or shoot us a chat, whatever the case may be. Yeah, as Yolando pointed out, I think we've been trying, I I've been trying to keep an eye on the chat and cover things, but we may have missed some things along the way. And so we will be saving the chat and integrating it with our meeting notes from this evening and all of the poll results. And compiling it with the the direction we receive. And then eventually combining it with, hopefully we'll receive additional responses. So please do, and I'll give you some instructions for that in a moment. Refer this presentation to your friends and neighbors, and then they can use the companion Qualtrics poll to follow up. So not seeing, oh, I do see one hand, actually. Maureen, let us recognize you. Go. So where came Maureen?
Okay, I'm not, thank you very much. I just think it would be helpful for people to see what the reality is where we are right now with North Main Street and to know that where, how the zoning works at the where we are today. So this evening, after we closed with this portion of the meeting, the planning board is having a regular public meeting. And in this public meeting, we are doing the reviews for a number of projects, and the first one will be a project on the Mineki site where there's a redevelopment project in front of us. Our board is not going to be granting the permit, or our board will be reviewing it. So if you just stay and go into the planning board meeting, you'll see exactly what's before us right now. And you should understand that right now, the that same project will be going before the Design Review Committee and the Historical Commission. But in the end, the permit will be up to the zoning board of appeals. So there's a process that I think people need to understand and to see what we're getting at the present. And some of the, you've also seen what the new construction looks like on North Main Street. Right near the Bellino Park on the opposite side of the park. That's what is being delivered today under the current zoning bylaw. So at the point being generally two things. First, for people to understand what the current zoning bylaw allows and what the process is. And then the second, to stay with us and join us as, you know, in the as an open public meeting, join us in the planning board meeting that is to continue at 8:30.
Very quickly, sorry, Josh, I just wanted to point out, I just put in the chat that it is actually under a different Zoom. So in terms of just staying, you you actually won't be able to just stay. But I did put the the Zoom link in the chat, and it is the Zoom link that's on our public notice for our meeting.
Thank you, Brian, and thank you, Maureen, for those that context and those comments from the planning board. So with that in mind, I will, and not seeing any other hands presently, I will just close this out with a brief description of, oh, it looks like Sherry, before we move on, one last comment, notice on me.
Yeah, I just realized one of the questions I hoped you were going to ask us, which didn't, and Maureen Maureen's response made me think of it, was who should be the permitting authority along North Main Street? And my personal opinion is that I think it needs to get out of the zoning board of appeals, but it would be nice to have that sort of a question to the community.
Yep, I've, that's a great comment. This, we do have, as mentioned, a two-part series here with our community outreach, and I think in the second meeting, we'll be getting into some of the more detailed recommendations potentially in that session, but this was more of a a general opening about what people want to see on the corridor and and shying away from specific administrative type changes or those suggestions. But no, I totally appreciate it. That's a very important point. And completely relevant to what what all the dynamics that are occurring. Alright, so no other, one last call, I guess, for other questions of the last minute hand to pop up. Okay. Just in terms of this study, as I did mention, we will have a community meeting, a second one at the end of April or May, so please do watch out for that. It'll be posted on the the town calendar and town website. Once that meeting is set, the date isn't currently known for us yet. We'll get that determined. But that will will get into some of the more of the details as were just mentioned. There is an online survey with the link on the screen that mapz.az1qualtrics.com is is a companion survey to what you've just experienced this evening that people can take online on their own time. So if you know of a neighbor, anyone, a business owner, property owner, that wasn't able to join us this evening, we would love for you to send them this, send them towards this recording, send them that notice Yolando has put it in the chat for you to grab. Then we'll also be advancing our analyses and the analysis of the zoning specifically and continuing with stakeholder interviews. So that's the other plug to mention again is if you'd like to be interviewed, or if you know of someone that should be, please do let us know the person's name and contact information, and we'll reach out to them and make sure that we understand all the perspectives that we need to in this process. So with that, looks like we're just about at exactly 8:30, and I give you all a hearty thank you for your participation this evening and your feedback and your thoughtful consideration of where North Main, excuse me, where North Main Street should be headed. We really appreciate that. So on behalf of Yolando and myself and Brian and the planning board and and all the others in the town, thank you so much for participating.
Just very quickly, I wanted to say again, thank you to the 50 people or so that have been giving comments. And thank you so much to Josh and Yolanda for a very well run meeting.
Yes, thank you very much, Josh, for all your work you did for this. The planning board will be moving to our next meeting in about one minute, but I wanted to thank you and everyone from MAPC for putting this together and for making it such an active event. I know a lot of people are are more new to these surveys on and for making it such an active um event. Um I know a lot of people are are more new to these surveys on uh Zoom, but it seemed to work really well and provided us some really good information. Um the planning board um will be moving over to our next Zoom and continuing, and as um discussed, we have a bunch of ZBA special permits that we'll be reviewing. One is actually in this area is noted. Um and a couple of A and Rs, and that is what's on our agenda. So if you'd like to join us, please continue uh onward to our next Zoom, and thank you. Thank you so much, MAPC. We look forward to all the work that you have before you on this, the continuation of it. Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
So today we have a handful of them. We actually have, let's see, six um ZBA special permits we'll be reviewing. Uh the planning board typically gives recommendations for favorable or unfavorable action to the ZBA based on the special permit criteria. We then go into, we have two approval not required for two sites, um and then hopefully we will be adjourned by ten o'clock. Um and uh we are being recorded, so if um you do speak, we do ask that you say um your name and address for our recording secretary. We also uh want you to know that for everyone who's here, who is part of the application teams for all of the special permits that we will be reviewing. We typically um have a are been going where we go through. If it looks like we're going to move to unfavorable action, we will ask the applicants to speak before making that mo motion motion. We will um give you that opportunity. Um obviously, if we're not, we will um we just continue to our discussion and move the vote. Um to begin with, however, we have nine seventy-two Main Street. We have already recommended unfavorable action on this application to the ZBA. However, it has been brought to our attention that there's been a new design of the building, so the ZBA has asked us to re-review that. Um since we did recommend unfavorable action on that, I will give the applicants, if they are here, a maximum of five minutes to go over the changes that they are proposing for that property. Um then, since there are so many here, and many of you are new to this process, we um go through that. The planning board has will hear uh recommendations from the town planner along with the engineering department. And then we also, uh if we have received communication from historical commission, design review, we also take those into consideration as well before we make a recommendation. So beginning, let's start with number three nine one nine, nine seventy-two Main Street. Are the applicants here?
Yes, we are, thank you.
Thank you. Um if you would, um I'm not sure if you've worked out with uh Brian how to share your screen, or if he needs to share the screen on your behalf, but you are welcome to begin, and you have five minutes.
Thank you very much. Uh if Brian could share the screen, I would appreciate that. This is Kurt Miller, seventy-six Washington Street, Charlestown. And we're we're submitting a uh an updated design for a uh a residence at nine seventy-two Main Street. Uh this submission was uh an update from the earlier one that was uh denied by the uh by the board. We're not intending this to be a full uh a full set of plans, but a uh a revised exterior design and and floor plan design to hopefully facilitate a conversation with the uh constructive uh conversation with the board about what they would like for the uh for this area. Uh just to quickly summarize what the uh the project is, it is a fourteen-unit residential building at the uh current site of Mineki Car Care. Uh it's going to be twelve uh small, either studio or one-bedroom uh units, all under a thousand feet uh and two two-bedroom units. Uh one of the units will be affordable. We're also proposing a uh one, one of the units to be ADA compliant. Where we look at this as delivering a uh a higher-density housing to the North Main Street area uh and also with with a lower uh cost of housing as well. Uh we look at the typical buyer for this would be a downsizer looking to uh sell their single family and stay in Winchester and uh younger buyers looking to enter the uh the housing market in Winchester. Uh it, the project will replace an existing non-conforming uh use on the property. It meets with all of the uh town dimensional zoning and use requirements for the uh for the area. And we think it uh significantly improves the uh the pedestrian access along Main Street there. We are proposing to eliminate the uh the curb cut that you see across the entire front of the Mineki property uh with the uh the entrance to uh to the property off of Glenwood uh which utilizes the uh the natural grade at the site uh and allows for parking under the building. So in uh in the update to the uh to the uh the design, we have uh we have significantly, well, completely changed the uh the roof design on the building. And as well as the uh the entrance, we've added a uh a gable roof with dormers uh from changing it from the uh the prior flat roof design. Uh we have enhanced the uh the entryway. Uh and well, with the the look of the building is uh similar to what was there before. The uh the lower brick section is is now a uh a film kiln-fired brick. It's a thin brick applied to the uh to the front of the building, but is a, it is a real, it is a real brick product. It's made by a company called Brickett. And in the upper portions, we're proposing a uh a hardy plank uh clapper clabbered siding. And those are the uh those are the significant changes that we've made to the uh to the exterior of the building. We've included all four uh elevations. And as I said, this is not intended to be a full set of architectural plans, but we wanted to uh to get some direction from the board as if if this was a uh a design that was that was uh to their liking. There were also some questions by the board about the uh uh retaining walls utilized uh on the uh the left side of the the building going down Glenwood Avenue. There will be an exposed uh retaining wall, which will manage the uh the natural drop in grade from uh Main Street down to the rear of the property, which is about eight feet. Uh so we either, we either have to have a retaining wall or exposed uh exposed foundation to uh to manage it in the in a site this size. And the uh that there were also comments about uh the roof having a needing an elevator uh, an elevator uh doghouse. Uh we're planning to use a hydraulic elevator that shouldn't require that. Uh we'll include um mechanical drawings uh of the roof in a full set of plans. And the uh the parapet in the earlier uh design was, there was a comment that that would not meet energy code, that the parapet has been removed. Uh egress requirements, uh we meet all of the egress requirements uh necessary for a building of this size and uh and occupancy. Believe that's, there was, there was a comment regarding the uh the landscaping, not matching the rendering, uh that was watercolor rendering, and we uh intended it to be an artistic representation and not a an exact representation of the building and all of its uh architectural detail. So that, we have not submitted a uh a new architect, a new uh watercolor rendering with the design, with the updated design. Thank you very much for the for the time.
Thank you, Kurt. Uh Brian, do you have your recommendation?
Um, yes, so hold on just a second. Um so the petition here is seeking a special permit to be, so as we permit to construct fourteen units um with uh together with related parking, landscaping, and other improvements. The petition is also under for site plan review um in order to construct the uh the project and properties located, and as we just know, noted previously in the GBD three and contains twelve thousand square uh feet. Um I did not take much of a position on this and basically um based on the planning board's memo from from November. Um it it didn't come, it didn't completely appear that um this that changes were significant in terms of the grading on the site. Um the materials have improved, I would say, but I I I was really kind of more basing upon the my decision based upon the planning board's decision. Um so I'm I'm really, in this case, kind of more deferring to the board. I uh we didn't agree the the first time, so I'm I'm, I did not think that this um met what the planning board was looking for in that first uh go around. That is all I I had for this.
Thank you, Brian. Engineering?
Back in November, uh the engineering department responded with about thirteen comments with respect to this project. Um it's to my knowledge that those comments have yet to be addressed. So it would be engineering's department's recommendation to have the package resubmitted for re-review or comment addressed to um the findings back in November.
Heather, I did create quite a few um notes, so could I um just read those? I'll just run through them. Um first of all, just as a point of information for anyone who's interested, uh the design review committee will be looking at this tomorrow evening. So it's again, it's a public meeting and people could zoom in if they're um neighbors or butters who have some concern about it, they should certainly um pick up what's uh being said at the designer review committee meeting. Um I do also want to just say as a point of information that while I'm sure we welcome the one affordable unit with fourteen units total, we actually fall behind on our goal of ten percent affordable units in the town. So this is, although it's a plus to get one unit, we actually fall behind in terms of the forty B calculation. So just put that out there as a matter of record. Um beside that, then, uh I do want to consider the design. Um we do need, when we get uh and try to evaluate projects like this, we need full um, we need elevations. Yeah, Brian, anything you can bring in could be helpful, but we really do need to see the context, and so it's a right, an elevation that includes on buildings to the side or on the side street all um show the building and its scale in context to the butters. When we had our last meeting um with our um neighbors, um fellow citizens on North Main Street, it was pointed out that um the setback is very tight up against the residential neighborhoods right now. So we want to see how this transitions into the um side streets, but also how it works with the um objective. And we did hear that two and two to three stories is about how people see um the growth on North Main Street. So I think three is in the range for what we might expect here, but we do have to consider how this works with the buildings to either side and along um has transitions to the side street. Now, actually, Brian, if you could go to A two point two, um that shows us the retaining wall. And I'm maybe I'm getting a lag. There we go. Um but the um A two two, no, that's A two three. Yeah, the retaining walls are concerning because this is a residential neighborhood, and we want people to be able to walk out from their, walk out on the sidewalk from their street and not just be crowded out by a big um retaining wall. And then even with retaining walls, there's a question of materials. But in terms of the architecture, archi, a well-designed building doesn't need a massive retaining wall. It rather works with the slope. Um and I would um say that this uh type of project should be much more respectful of the slope rather than just building the site up uh with retaining walls. So that's a broad concept. Um let's see, materials, I guess, um I'll leave that for later discussion. Uh but I will say, just if Brian, if you don't mind going back to the main elevation. One thing I noticed when we got the project in on um Elmwood was that if you're going to do lintels, and you can barely see them, I'm now looking at my screen, but I have paper here too. Any kind of a lintel should look like it actually is structural, and that, yeah, now that you can start to see it, and that it actually goes over the windows. Or not just sits on top, but actually moves to either side of the window, supporting the weight above it. So there's certain smaller um points, but they do come out when you start to see the um pro, if this were actually built. And that's an easy one that can be addressed, but somebody's got to start pointing out these things. Um the uh it's nice to have a marked front door. The last project did not, our last elevations did not. At least we're now looking at a front door, but these posts that are at least we're now looking at a front door, but these posts that are supporting the canopy are just posts. They need to have some kind of design and the canopy is, I think, rather awkwardly positioned right now against the big, what I think is a projecting bay in the, in this design. So the canopy has to be resolved. This is not resolved at all. So there's a fair amount of work on that. Also, there needs to be some kind of relief and some kind of transition from this brick. I know it's a brick veneer, but this brick transition to the, I'll call it kindly, clabbered. But it needs a transition. It needs freezeboard under the gate, under the eaves. There's a lot. This will all the otherwise, just like a really, really flat plasticky building. And our, our town deserves better than a plasticky sort of shrink wrapped looking type building. So conceptually, there's something I think here to work with, but needs moldings around the, the surround, it needs moldings around the door frames. I wouldn't put side lights on this door. That's a Greek revival feature and you've kind of got an 1890s, 1910s type of building. So no side lights. Do something different with that door. Let's see, what else? The landscaping plan, man, I know it's, that's not your final version, but right now we've just got little box shrubs all the way around the perimeter. Yeah, that would be great if you could go to it. This landscaping plan needs, it, it, it just, this is not, this landscaping plan doesn't do it at all. So that needs a whole reworking. But let's get to the building first. And I would say that depending on what the ZBA does, no matter what, absolutely, that this needs to go to peer review for design. Because there's, there's just a lot here that needs to be addressed to get the kind of building we want. So I'm done. Thank you.
Other members of the planning board?
I guess I'll go next. Hi. So I want to underline a lot of what Maureen said. I think she said it quite well. I think that you've got the bones of the design that we can work with. I think that there's a lot of work which has to be done on, on getting some complex details on the front. So as Maureen pointed out, it doesn't just look like this essentially a nondescript building. We really need some design features which make this, if you want to make it look like a historical structure, you need to copy all of the interesting things that make itself. I want to point out at least one problem with our zoning, which is that we have a horrible definition of garden apartments, which is this is coming in as a special permit, has allowed garden apartments. And anyone who thinks that in Winchester, garden apartment actually is something which leads out into a garden or has independent entrances to each of the apartments will be thoroughly disappointed to learn that it's essentially a three-story building with housing units. And so I think we have to go back and revise that. One of the other things that I think is important is to look at whether this actually meets the number of stories. And I can't do that from these drawings. I want to point out that the definition of story in the zoning bylaw does talk about whether or not you can include the lower levels dependent upon whether, and I'll bring mine up here, see if I can read it to you. It does not include the lowest portion so contained if more than one half of such portion vertically is below the mean finished grade of the ground it's zoning such a building. So if we look at, Brian, if I, I have to get my zoom back here. If you look at the, I believe it's the southern elevation. Now I have to find my zoom. Yeah, so from that, I can't figure out how much of the basement is actually underneath mean grade because I can't figure out what mean grade is. But I think it's important that you get that calculation because of the slope in this lot. I, I, my, I don't know. The other thing that I'm very concerned about is the livability of the first floor units, especially those on Main Street. And Brian, I just sent you a link to a Google map. I don't know if you got that email.
Just give me a sec.
Yeah. So the link is to a multi-unit building that, that may, it's next to the funeral home on Main Street and it has first floor residences, which I don't know how anyone actually lives there because they're very close to the sidewalk and they essentially, I believe, have to keep their blinds shut all the time. So I understand that. I don't know how you fix this. In some places you have, you know, for instance, townhouses where you have one level, half below ground, half above ground, which gives you some sort of a vertical relief. So, oh, I'm a co-host now.
I just made you a co-host because I have not received the email, so I thought it'd be faster if you just put it up.
It could be faster. Let me see if that works. I put it on my phone though, that's the problem. It probably isn't faster, but everyone knows what the building next to the, to the funeral home is. It's an apartment, it's a rental units. And so I'm really concerned about the use, the livability of those units. I'm also, as Maureen pointed out earlier, really concerned about the, the size of the retaining walls. I think they really will detract from the residential neighborhood of the side, nature of the side street. And that really close setback in the back. I'm just, there's a lot of things that need to be very carefully done in order to get this to work. And since I'll just keep repeating what Maureen said, I'll just stop now. Thank you. There it is.
I got it the second, literally the second you finished it.
Yeah, so those, those floor, ground floor units are, you know, you can see the shades are drawn and they're always drawn, as far as I know, and I walk by there a few times a week. So we need to avoid having units that everyone can look into. It just doesn't work. Anyway, thank you.
This is Cheryl. I'd like to build on what Diab was just discussing about this particular space and reflecting on what Kurt has designed. I think this, what you've presented tonight is a, is an improvement, Mr. Miller. And I appreciate the, the work that's gone into really improving the representation of a building that, replacing Meineke is a, is a, is an improvement to Main Street, absolutely. But to Diab's point, I think creating rather than a posy patch and a front yard on Main Street, I think we can do much better in terms of creating an amenity to the, the sort of public nature of living on Main Street and living in a multifamily or a multi-unit building. And I, I would encourage you to consider what potential the landscape has, both at the front of the building especially, but also to the rear where the, the residents could feel as though, you know, they park, they go in and they have nothing more than that in terms of their, their home and their idea of home, living here. But I, I really do, I, I commend you that this is a huge improvement to what we were looking at before. So please, please move forward with, with your sensibilities about creating entry, about understanding the slope. And especially as Maureen had, had pointed out, really being able to illustrate for all of us how you connect in, in all directions, east, west, how, how the neighborhood actually comes up to Main Street and how this, this architecture could, you know, be, you know, sort of a, a threshold or a, you know, creating a, a community between both Main Street, which is a large, is a thoroughfare and all of the neighborhoods that exist behind it. I think that was one of the things that we learned in our last meeting about the study of North Main Street. And that is that we, we have, you know, an environment that people live in currently and the desire for people to feel as though the community is vibrant, both commercially and also as in terms of multifamily dwellings, which is what we're all trying to, to work towards. So I, I don't think we're going in the wrong direction. I think we just need more support in understanding the, the ability of the design of what you're doing to integrate into this, this point of Main Street and North Main Street.
Good. We welcome that.
Thank you.
I don't know if we lost Heather, but I just.
I'm just looking there. It is possible.
I won't repeat anything that was already said really, but I do think it's an improvement over what we saw before. And I'll just say that I think it's possible to have windows for units on the first floor, but you could take cues from the way that other kinds of houses do that in terms of porches or landscaping or being raised up a little bit. Because I do think it's good to have the eyes on the street.
I want to thank Heather Hannan for making that point. I do agree. It's, it's eyes on the street. It's really valuable. I actually think it's positive. And I've lived in places where we've been on the first floor and major streets, but pedestrian streets. And yeah, so people put up shears or blinds, but it's still, the lights come on at night and so on. You sense that there's activity there. So there obviously, they want to get three full stories here, so it's, it's just the reality.
So I'm in contact with Heather. She got booted off. Diab, I think you should take over until she returns.
Okay. I actually just wanted to make one more comment that I'd forgotten about and Cheryl reminded me of that. And that is the, the landscaping seems more decorative than functional for the people in the house. So there isn't a patio. There's not a place for people to hang out or use it. And, you know, private gardens, things like that are something which would really bring that into, you know, the lives of the residents. So I think that's an important consideration is how do you make that landscape be more than just lawn that gets mowed? And something that's part of their lives. Okay, so.
Well, let me just amplify because my worst fear would be then to see the front paved over.
Yes, I agree.
And nobody would use a patio in the front facing on Main Street.
I, I understood, yes.
Wish for there. Don't want to give the wrong sense here.
So I, I think we're at the point now where we need to, these, as the petitioner said, these are drawings to engender further discussion. And so I don't know if this is something where we actually want to come to a vote in terms of approval or disapproval, since it's obviously still a work in progress. So what we might want to do is simply for the board to give a sense of our reaction to this, where we want it to go, where we think it needs more work, et cetera. Is that something that seems reasonable?
Yeah, I think we need to give a, because the ZBA will take this, my understanding is, am I correct here? I'm flipping through papers. It's, it's before them again. Correct, Brian?
Yeah, it's before them, I believe.
I think if, I, I know that, you know, I gave out my comments really quickly, but if those general points and then pick up with Diab and Cheryl, but if those can be summarized somewhere between Brian, you, Diab, and, and certainly Nancy, that we do want to send those observations on to the ZBA. I would make a motion to encourage a further discussion or maybe I should say further iteration before it's ready. But at some point, it's going to need a review with 53G and I do believe it can be turned over to a, a design consultant. So there's just too much as I was starting to go through moldings that aren't there, freezeboards that aren't there. It just, it really is going to have to land with somebody else who can work on this. So that would be the ultimate outcome to me. So I would like to make sure we state that. But landscaping plan that needs work. And I think one of the highlights, high level ones, is that that retaining wall is not a nice neighbor to the people who live on Glenwood. So we really do want to figure out what's going on with that elevation, with that elevation, yeah, of that, from this side of Glenwood.
Maureen, I was also, sorry, I'm back. I lost my connection.
We missed you, Heather.
I didn't get to share my comments, although I agreed with pretty much everything all of you said on the planning board. On the other side is of the retaining wall, actually on Main Street, the planning board has been talking about this property for a while, that with the subdivision of the next store, there's supposed to be single-family housing there. And that's part of the closeout of the subdivision. So yeah, we're talking about Glenwood because there's existing house there, but it's actually supposed to be surrounded by single-family houses on all sides. With the subdivision just never got closed out and the land that is now currently used for parking is supposed to actually be getting single-family houses on it. So, yep, there you go. You're pointing to that area. So the other side is, yes, we're going to build these huge retaining walls up against the butters on Glenwood, which is what's being proposed and it's not, that is, that is pretty impactful. And then it's also going to be on the other side, which is pretty impactful as well. Right now there's parking there, but it's actually supposed to be turned into single-family lots along Main Street based on the subdivision. It was part of the condition placed on that land from when they went for a subdivision. So I just, that, my point was the wall, it's very intrusive to Glenwood. Glenwood is, has some very, I, I, the historical commission hasn't fully reviewed Glenwood, have they? I don't, we don't have any of the historical records of Glenwood with us this evening, but those houses are pretty old and have some historical merit back, back to them as well. And they're fairly, there's the 9/11 Glenwood is a two-family. It has a big garage in the back, but it's pretty nicely scaled. So I, I agree with you, Maureen, that if the ZBA took in 53G and did a full analysis and got a full section through the site leading into Glenwood Avenue in all directions, looked at really what we're talking about in the difference of the elevations, how big those walls are, how much of the trees are we missing? It is unclear to me in the plans is the landscaping only deals with this property. It does not deal with exactly where the trees are. That would be taken out between this property and the one on Glenwood. What happens there with that, the shrubs that are in place, I'm sure design review tomorrow will be going through the landscaping and not, will have comments regarding the consistent one shrub all the way around the perimeter. They're usually not in support of that. So that, that's kind of where I'm going out with it. The elevation has issues. And I don't know if Cheryl or Heather, you picked up on it that all those different planes, none of them align. So that makes the roof really funky, as if they made less planer changes or at least captive, you're on one upside of the right and left and the same. But in the plans, you'll see that there's like five different elevations in the front, but then the roofs are somewhat hiding some of them and somehow not hiding some of them, the differences. So there you go. When you actually look at the plans close up, you'll see that they're actually not aligning. Whether it's, so it looks like there's really, right, three different elevations, but when you actually look at them in a plan, there are actually almost five different front facade, front facades at all different planes. So it's a, it's, there's no reason for that and it should be cleaned up, which will clean the roof line up as well. So I think it really needs to go to 53G is the recommendation would be that at this point, go to 53G and have design consultant review this project and fully evaluate it.
Yeah, this is Cheryl again. I think, I think the points made about drawing sections through the site would be, right now we're seeing retaining walls. We're not seeing anything of the building or the buildings surrounding the site. So that's, I think that's really critical to understand the, understanding a three-story plus building on the site and its impact on the neighborhood as well as on Main Street. Again, it's front and back and, and as you said, Heather, it's, you know, the, the roof line. The, the roof line will be better understood as well in section two, so. Um, you know, these are very flat, two-dimensional representations of something that's starting to look. Um, it's starting to come together, but um, we really need something more three-dimensional. To really understand its impact.
It's also showing the brick going all the way down to the grass. It's not taking into account the foundation walls. There's just some, in the elevation, there's some things that are. Uh. Not accurately represented at this point. But it's getting there, it's moving there. It's still very in a preliminary design versus um, more.
Right, but in terms of concept, Heather, it's, you know, we're, we're starting to see gables, we're, we're bringing in brick. Um, you know, your clabbered ideas are, are good. Um, front entry needs to, to, to really get um, fully developed. It's, it's headed in the right direction.
Yep, it's moving there from what was originally proposed. I agree. Alright, those, those are my feedback. So, sorry I got cut out.
Um, so in terms of um. So Maureen had, had started working on a motion which would essentially. Um, underscore the fact that we believe this is a step forward. Uh, we are encouraged further integration. Uh, we recommend fifty-three G um, design consultants. And um, so that would be the gist of the motion.
Yes.
And, and then along with that, I would, since I'll be writing this up probably by the end of the week. I will include much of the comments we heard and. Maureen, if you have your comments written, would you be so kind as to send them to me? Because I don't know if Nancy will have a. A set of minutes done by the time I need to write this off.
Well, I think um, hopefully there um, uh, the, the short answer is okay, I, I don't have anything written. Uh, it's all scribbled on the plans, so. Um, and.
I can review the record, I can review the recording.
Okay.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, thank you, that's.
Yeah, can you also include that all the engineering, the fifteen components that engineering need to be addressed before the ZBA? Takes any more further action that we recommend.
Okay.
Or any more time is spent on this at the, that the engineering?
Engineering needs um.
Response to comment.
Needs response to comments. Okay, so um, let me reiterate what we've got. Um, no, I think. Brian, are you keeping notes of the actual minute or moment, motion?
Uh, I'm. No, I was keeping, so I, I do, I certainly do have notes here, but they, uh, so I'll show you what I, what I have. Um, so.
Because unfortunately, my notes are scattered off over three sheets of paper.
Well, it's, it, it, there, there's a lot of comments, but that's not really the motion. The motion is, is, is talking about fifty-three is, is fifty-three G is needed to make this a successful project. Um, in, in order to go in a right direction. And then there's a number of comments that are, that are talking about that. I don't know if that's really part of the motion in terms of. Lintils and freeze boards and all this other things. It's more of.
Well, we definitely want those points to be addressed and some of the more. Let me say this, the more that can be fed into or whatever, directed into the memo. Um, so that everybody sees it, the further along it is before it goes to the um, peer reviewer uh, for design. So it really, I mean, all these things should be hit, one would hope, but it's certainly, we want them, we want them enumerated.
Well, they will be enumerated, but the, as, as Brian pointed out, they're mainly sort of um, contextual comments for. For, so I think um, let me, I'm, I started a new piece of paper. And so the motion is recommend a three G, not three G, those are.
Chapter forty-four, fifty-three G.
Fifty-three G, uh, three G is what you do with your phones. Um, recommend fifty-three G design consultant. And uh, engineering was, needs response to comments, and those are. Um, those are the two. I think things that.
Well, I'd hate to just, that's too brief.
Well, there will be substantial, underneath recommend fifty-three G design consultant will be all the things we've talked about. In terms of background material.
I, yeah, I'll, I'll just review the recording and we'll incorporate, incorporate that into the memo.
Yeah, Brian and I will work together and get it all out. And I believe they are meeting next week, so um, we'll get this out.
But Heather's right, right now, I mean, I saw that too. Um, the roof line right now, I, nobody could quite figure out what's going on, so some of this really should be. Honestly, this isn't done, even in a, as a conceptual, it's not cooked.
Right. Okay, so um, is, so the. Maureen, is that, I have two points on the motion with a boatload of. Background material to, to put into the memo.
So.
There's a second.
I will second that.
Uh, discussion? Roll call vote please.
Hanon, aye.
Jerry, aye.
Meister, aye.
All five.
Unmayring, aye. Motion passes five oh. Thank you very much, and uh, Diab will be sending that out to the ZBA. Um, moving on to number three-nine-three-zero-nine-eleven Webster Lane. Brian, do you want to give your recommendation?
Uh, yes, I do. Um. The screen problems, okay. Um, so petition three-nine-three-zero at nine-to-eleven Webster. So the petitioner is seeking a site plan review from section nine-five-one to construction in addition. To an existing duplex where the total floor area will be more than thirty-six hundred square feet. Uh, the historical commission and the designer view, they're meeting this um. This and next week on this. Um, the house was built in eighteen ninety-three and is recommended as above average significance on the listing for the National Register. Uh, on the Massachusetts Cultural Resource Inventory. Um, the proposal entails a rather large addition to tween and duplex. Um, the, the street is defined by medium and large, yet charming duplexes on both sides of the street. Uh, the neighborhood analysis that was performed by the applicant, I thought was extremely helpful and would wish that more applicants would do such a study, especially for large additions like this. Uh, the duplexes on the street have, have, have been expanded over time, uh, if you, if you walk up and down the street. Um, it's a pretty large addition going from point, uh, FAR of point-two-seven to point-four-one. Um. As you saw in the packets, it was that this was the fourth largest FAR on the street. And is, is comparable with a few other houses that have similar lot size. I feel it's all kind of on the borderline of being too big for the street, but I, I really kind of defer to um. Engineer and the historical commission for any of their analysis on the project. But I'm um, inclined to move this project forward and generally think that the, the design is appropriate if large.
Thank you, Brian. Engineering. I believe Brian is here from engineering today.
Yes, thank you. Um, yeah, the initial design um, has all the components that the engineering department will look for. However, there are aspects which warrant further clarification from the applicant. Um, these clarifications may require adjustment to their design, however. Um, it's not anticipated that these. Modifications to their design will adversely impact their, their approach to the project.
Thank you, Brian. Members of the planning board.
Well, I'd love for somebody else to jump in, but I know that, and not from anybody on this board, but another, um, somebody else on another advisory board. It's really kind of dismayed at the, I, Brian, are you able to bring up the main elevation? Um, it's. Uh, I think that this is a house that really wants a detached garage. That'll, that'll deal with the entire massing issue. Um, going back is, does not seem, I mean, people do it, it's fine in the expansion, but the garage just. Would, it would do a lot better if it weren't connected, so that's my view.
Yeah, I, I agree. Uh, the garage just doesn't meet the architectural standards of the house as it's designed. And I agree, it's, everything seemed to be shoved. The, the house needs some space around it. That's what it's designed to have. And I find that the, the moving of the, of the driveway and the positioning of the garage really crowds the house, so I agree. Uh, uh. Uh, a detached garage would work much better on this property.
Heather or Cheryl?
Um, that didn't jump out at me. I mean, I agree that these kinds of houses were built with detached garages. Um, but. We have been approving attached garages and mudrooms. Um, on other historic houses, so I think it would be a double standard if we said that this one couldn't have that. I just would want to make sure that we're consistent in when we say people can. Attach their garage to their house.
Could I, could I reply to that, Heather?
Yep, go ahead.
Um, I just want to, I, I, there are a couple, and I believe one of the reasons we approved them was because. My recollection, which could be faulty, is that there really wasn't the ability to put the garage behind the house. Either because of setback issues. Or I think in one case, it was going down to one of the lakes. Um, so that would be my, my recollection is that I think we, this is, we can do it on this property. Um, I think that it's possible.
Well, there's one in my neighborhood we just approved where they have a garage and. They're bumping out the kitchen and they're going to attach, they're going to make a connection. The one on Windsor that we just approved.
Okay, I don't recall that one, but. I accept the fact my memory is lousy.
I mean, I don't think it looks great, but I just don't think we should say yes sometimes and no other times unless there's a reason to.
Well, I think that's the whole point of, I mean, not just I think, that is the whole point. Of this kind of review, that it's that you can't just create a one-size-fits-all. That's the entire purpose, so. The idea that there's um, underlying zoning, that yes, that's the consistent zoning. But after that, that there's some recognition that all situations aren't the same, therefore it takes evaluation. So I think you're. Um. You're, you're concerned about something that the law contemplates, that not all situations are the same and that judgment has to be made, so that's my.
Yeah, so I would just ask what's different about this one that makes it feel like you don't want it to be attached?
Right, no, and that's the right question. Um, to me, it's the um. I guess I would describe it, and looking at this picture is very helpful, because I think that there's a, an architect who did a very, um, what? Clearly, it's a very high style. I wish, we probably don't know who the architect was, but probably a prominent Boston architect, late nineteenth century. And that he's taking the masses and balancing the masses, and once you um, put this. Um, and of course, this is existing, it's not what we would get, but it's um, just the. I, I, I just think that the garage detracts from the unity of this um, original design. So, I, that's all. I just think it's compete, it competes in a way. Some of them that are way, way back. Uh, don't compete, and this, I think, is going to just look like a lot of garage um, up against the beautiful Victorian house.
Maureen, maybe there's something they can do with the roof line to make the garage read as separate. With a, like a breezeway.
Uh-huh, you know, maybe. Um. Anyway, this just doesn't do it right now.
Yeah, I think that this is, well, I think if there was some relief in the ridge that's being shown in that last image, um. It could, it could really be helpful. I mean. Honestly, um. I hear absolutely with what Heather Hanon's saying, and I think it's really important to be consistent. Um, I think that the neighbor has a lot of blacktop, blacktop. And, and what's being accomplished here is trying to um. Keep a, a driveway separate from a lawn, but I think that same, that same approach is not being accomplished. In the architecture, so if we were to say um. A breezeway or some other break in that, in the ridge of the um. Of the garage before it meets the house could certainly um, maintain sort of our more contemporary. You know, need to have a connection between house and garage, you know, in terms of um, protecting one from the elements, but at the same time. Um, you know, respect um, the architecture and, and, I mean, looking at the many roof lines that are already in the, in the massing of this house. Um, the, the garage seems oversimplified, so maybe there's just a way that um, that the, the architect could, could look at that. The ridge of the, the garage roof and, and just break it down slightly so that it, it comes to the house in a more. Um, in a friendly way, let's say.
I think that would be better.
I think the other side of it too, that is causing it to be thrown off and just not be supportive of the historical house, is that its elevation is lower. And then it's shrunk down, and then the shape of the roof of the garage doesn't match the shapes. Of, you almost want it to be um, have a pediment on the side of it versus what's going on here with the, the, just the. You want something to happen with the garage that's more. Uh, just utilitarian looking.
Yeah, there, there aren't any other hip roofs in this, in the entire building, right? So.
Yeah. Yeah, and it doesn't, so it doesn't go and it's set down and it looks small and lost, then it's attached to it. And then the garage doors aren't in the style of the windows and the front door. Um, and either is the side entry door and the windows don't, it just doesn't match with the historical house. Um, but I think if they, I think if they brought it into that. Into that, the, the style of the house. Either raised it up, so it's at a higher level and aligns with the lines of the front porch and the. You know, the profiles of front porch align with the roof lines. It would be much more accepting, but right now it's just almost like a glued-on Lego. Um, to the house, and that's what's causing it to just be so, feel so out of place. I don't have a problem with attaching to it, I just would like it to be, to be complimentary to the style of the actual house. Um, and I like the idea that other two ways of doing it, right, is to fix the roof lines, maybe um, add. Add a dormer on that roof, or take it down over the mudway and then do the roof line. Right, so it's the one story and kind of fades away to then what the roof, of the, over the garage is, and get the height, rise up to it. But there, those are different options, and obviously that's just, but something's off on it. It's just, something is off. On the design of it, that's hurting the actual house itself. It's, it's a beautiful house. And it's just.
Motion is, so I guess, honestly, it's not ready. Um, so I don't know what to do, because if we were to say favorable, I know how it goes with the ZBA, it's just not going to be enough, so I think. Uh, I'm sorry, unfavorable would be maybe strong because we're supportive of a garage, but it looks, I mean, some, maybe even an, an. Attached garage, but uh, this has to be pretty substantially redesigned. So I don't know what kind of motion will do it, but I can, having attended a recent ZBA meeting a couple of months ago, I can say it's got to be pretty strong or clear.
So if we're going to move, um, if you're going to move in that direction, we need to open it up to the applicants. Um, our applicants, if you are here, if you could unmute yourself, if you wanted to ask any questions or have any discussion.
So Sally DeGan, the architect, is here.
Hi Sally.
Hello there. Um, so I appreciate your comments. Uh, I think we perhaps over. Uh, did it in trying to make this feel like a simple detached garage that happened to get attached. Um, and so I've been in contact with my client as, as you've been talking. Um, and I think they're open to either direction of. Coming back with a design that is a little, you know, we do differentiate the roof line of the garage. And bring it into the design style of the house. Um. Uh, so they're very open to that and/or potentially detaching the garage. Um, but I think they would still want a mudroom connect, you know, a mudroom addition there on the side. Um, and so I guess we'd, we'd do that, a similar, could we make that more in keeping with the front porch line, roof line? As you were describing.
Sally, can you, can you explain how the grass and the driveway meet the two garage doors? Because in this. In the image, it's a little difficult to understand that.
So this is just sort of a, a simple overlay of, of a re, you know. So, this is just sort of a, a simple overlay of, of a re, you know, our three D rendering, so. We didn't recreate the, the um, the landscape here, so. The entire driveway is gonna move over, so if you could almost imagine taking that driveway. And moving it so it's set straight in front of the garage, and then you'll have a strip of grass between. This garage and the neighbor's driveway.
I'll speak for myself, that sounds much better. So the question I have to Heather von Miering, how, um, I'm just trying to think of how to form. Or put this before the ZBA, or maybe I should ask the architect, if, if Heather, if I may do that.
I think, yeah, I, I was gonna ask it, so you can go ahead on my behalf as well, I was gonna ask, I'm sure you're going to.
The architect, um.
Sorry about that Heather.
Could you just um, tell us, would you then? Be a, either, well, it's just a matter of time, are you proposing then to uh, come up with a new. Design before it hits the ZBA, or are you thinking you'll ask them to continue and bring it back like in a month?
We would love to redesign before the ZBA hearing.
And the date, I'm sorry, I should have that, well, I probably do if I look. March eighteenth, so if that's doable, I guess that I could make a motion, Heather, if that's um, okay with you.
That's okay, you make a motion.
So I'm going to recommend favorable action, subject to um, the redesign of the garage. Uh, which shall be either a detached garage with some kind of a mudroom, I didn't understand it quite, but it sounded good. So um, I'll just leave it as subject to the redesign as discussed, um, to uh. What, bring the garage into, uh, I'm going to use these words, integrate more, uh, to be more sympathetic with the Victorian house, I'm gonna keep it simple. And um, then also, I did appreciate the concept about the driveway moving over and the strip of lawn, I think that'll soften this um, a lot. So I don't know if that has to be in the motion, but anyway, I would recommend favorable action, subject to the redesign of the um, garage. To be more sympathetic with the Victorian house, I'm gonna leave it like that and trust that we're all on the same page here.
Um, so I will second that motion, but I'd like to have a little bit of discussion.
All right, there's a second, uh, discussion.
Um, I just wanted to point out Maureen, that the movement of that driveway is actually in the plans, it's just. Sometimes, so I don't think we have to put that in the motion.
Good, thank you, thank you.
And, yeah, it's, it's a little confusing, I did have a question of the architect, will there be a, some sort of a retaining wall? Like, I'm afraid I don't remember seeing that, between the uh, the moved driveway and essentially the, the house, because you've got a slope there.
Yes, there's a retaining wall between the new driveway and the house, no retaining wall between the driveway and the neighbor.
And could you remind me, please, what the height of that wall would be, is that like, it's a couple feet?
It's only about two feet.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Um, Sally, um, did you plan to bring it back to the planning board, just so we know? Um, we are meeting every Tuesday between now and then, did you wanna bring it back to this, the planning board before then? That would be great.
Okay. We, so for the ninth, then, we can put you on.
So at this point, um, I actually don't think we need a motion, because they'll come back to us, that's the plan as of right now. Deib could include in his comments as of right now. You know, we are waiting for it to be, come back to us for a review prior to the ZBA and just leave it at that, and. Then when they come back, we'll strike that from our note to the ZBA.
Draw my motion, thank you.
Well, we actually, right, we actually don't have to, I don't have to file these comments until closer, until. I mean, if they're not, if this isn't being taken up until the eighteenth, I could send my memo next week after this, after our meeting.
All, all the memos, oh, sorry, all, all of these petitions are for the eighteenth, except for nine seventy-two that we just spoke about, that is, that is the eleventh. So just, just as a note.
Right, so we could, we can, we can, yeah, so I, I'll just hold off on sending anything until after our next meeting, for this.
Thank you so much Sally, all right, thank you all.
Sorry, one more thing, sorry, Sally, just to, when you do send um, the plans, make sure um, that you send them to everyone, so the ZBA and the planning board. Um, not just, not just us, and not just them.
Okay.
And the design review too.
Yeah, Brian, can you um, let uh, design review and historical know?
Well, so typically, so, um, actually, actually, I take it back, so Sally has probably been sending all documents to Janine, and Janine has been distributing them. Correctly, so I'm gonna withdraw my request and say, keep, keep going through Janine, and we will, uh, we will, we will get them.
No, we. Brian, could you send in a memo, um, just quickly to historical and design review, just. Going over what just happened, and that they'll be giving more design, and this is where the design is either going to be more in line with the house. Or it's gonna be separated, so that they know, and then, because they won't most likely be meeting between now and then.
I think they are, yeah.
No, no, design review, yeah, yeah, so I'm, I might even be, I'm probably, I'm gonna end up going to design review tomorrow. Um, and then I'm definitely going to historical on Monday, so I'll, I'll be there.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that they know, so they aren't like, looking at this and making decisions on what's here, since we know more is coming in. Okay, thank you, all right, thank you so much Sally for your time. Let's move on to sixteen Niles Lane. Brian?
Yep, so sixteen Niles Lane, um. The petitions are seeking a special permit to be able to demolish a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling. Located in a lot that does not meet the lot frontage and construct a new single-family home that will meet all setback requirements. Uh, in addition, they're seeking site plan review because the house will be larger than five thousand square feet. And because they will be changing the slope over six percent of the existing grade of an area more than five hundred square feet, so. Site plan review and special permit. Um, this is a property that's located in RDB zoning district, it contains fifty-three thousand square feet. The historical commission at their meeting on January eleventh voted to lift the delay based upon the current. Uh, or based upon the proposed design in front of us, uh, with one member absent and two members abstaining, uh, for this house built in nineteen thirty-nine. Um, the proposal entails the destruction, um, I guess, and, and subsequent creation of a new house. Um, I believe the lots only non-conforming due to frontage, um, however, as we've. Uh, talked about in other subdivision, uh, applications, section four-two-eight allows lots on turnarounds or curves to be reduced to a minimum of fifty feet of frontage. Rather than the required eighty. Um, so it's unclear, I think at this moment, if three-five-seven um, is needed in terms of. The frontage requirement, so that, that's a question out, that's out there. Uh, the other is that the house won't really be visible from the street, this, this resembles a lot of the project of, um, Three Edge Water. In terms of that you could see some portions of the street, but most of the, most of the house is actually seen from, uh, from the water. Um, Mr. Upper Mystic Lake, uh, in particular. Um, I didn't really see how the project negatively affected the neighborhood, uh, but for the size of the lot, I didn't. I didn't see why the rear setback, which is also conforming, uh, really had to be so close at sixteen feet. Uh, other than that, I would defer again to engineering and specifically Concom, based on any flooding and drainage issues, and would confirm with the historical commission. Which I will on Monday, if there were any changes from the approved plans in January, and that's all I have.
Uh, Brian from engineering.
Um, this uh, this project has been reviewed, embedded thoroughly through the Concom hearing process. Um, and through that process, the applicant has addressed all the flooding um, issues and concerns. Uh, there are still two outstanding minor co-issues of. With respect to how they're gonna tie in their sewer, sanitary sewer line into an existing sewer easement. And um, to verify with conservation that the. Location of the discharge from one of their infiltration chambers, which is inside or within a twenty-five foot buffer zone is um, acceptable. Other than that, engineering has no other comment.
Thank you, members of the planning board.
So this bill, um, the existing house, um, went before the historical commission, and a survey was done. Before a demolition um, delay um, was imposed, so my first question is, we didn't get the. Survey form, um, Brian, we really need to get those forms, and so does, if design review is looking at it and historical, they've got it presumably. But, uh, we're not getting them, so question, do you have it?
Uh, I do not have sixteen Niles form.
Hmm, so we've got a glitch, and that's pretty significant, so, once there's a demolition. Hearing, a hearing on a per, demo permit, a form is prepared um, by a consultant. Uh, you know, and the town pays for the consultant, so this is a sort of a, a break that we've got, that we've gotta repair. So, just um, then, can, can you help with that, I really, I just, I'm not gonna be pointing this out. Much in the future, but we've gotta make sure that when there are these forms, that we're getting them. I, I'm just perplexed, uh, we've got, I mean, the form is done as a survey, as a planning tool. To support the evaluation of the property or the historic resource, so we really have to have these.
Um, yeah, I, I, I understand that, um, I also understand that the historical commission. Um, did an extensive study of this with the, like you said, with, with, with a professional, and then based upon. Um, at the moment, uh, I would like to confirm, but based upon the design that, that's before us, the, the delay was, was lifted.
Right, but that's really a different point, because they went through a demolition delay process, and this is now for a special permit. And I think we've got to work on, um, uncoupling these. Um, the, and also, it should be pointed out, one member was missing, so we're now down to six. Um, members, and with that, that it was really a four-to-two vote, so it really wasn't this overwhelming agreement to just lift it. But it also had been on a demo, it was on delay for quite a few months. So, I know that there's this view that once the delay is almost um, over, and I don't know where it was in terms of the number of months. That, that some of the members, not all, but some of the members feel that it's time to see what would come in. Now, I don't believe that it's fully understood that there's, uh, there, if it's going to be a, a very large house. It's going to come back for both site plan review, and in the case of this one, a special permit. And then there are criteria that are really not related to the demolition delay, it's just, it's another time. To review and consider what's the impact on the historic resource. In the um, vote of the historical commission, this should be noted as part of the record, the vote was that this was deemed historically significant. Therefore, there's an impact on a historic resource, so we, there's a, I, I would say a. Um, what, an understanding that needs to be clear, that it's either historic or it's not, it's evaluated by an outside professional. And it was confirmed with a vote of the historical commission, that it is historically significant, I believe, but I don't have the form. Um, it was designed by Jerome Bailey Foster, does anybody else remember what came out of that hearing? It was actually quite an elaborate house, it's in pretty, it's in good condition, but the condition's not necessarily relevant, but it's, it's intact. Um, and there were some, um, there's, there's a lot of material to be read that should affect that, one of those criteria. Um, in this, you know, in this evaluation of granting this permit, so we're missing information here. And uh, the, this has happened before, and I just feel that this is an important point, that we've gotta have backup materials to. To make our recommendation.
Members of the board, other members of the board? Any comments?
Uh, well, I agree that it would be useful to have that form, um. Is that, was that the context of the comments you were looking for Heather, or were you looking from broader context?
Oh, no, I was asking about the, well, I mean, that's, that's part of your, if that's what you wanna comment on, but I was looking specifically towards the application. And what's before us.
Um, well, I, I have, um, I was looking mainly, I think, at, since architecture isn't my forte. Uh, I was looking at the landscaping plans, and what I found were unique in the landscaping plans is that when they delineated trees. Uh, they didn't give us diameters, they gave us heights. And I don't know how I, to translate from height to diameter. And then they did another thing, is where they, they summed up the height of the trees being removed. And the height of the trees they're being replaced with, which I thought was a bizarre thing to do. And what I think it's covering up is the fact that they are removing some rather tall trees, I'd say averaging thirty feet tall. And if I understand correctly, they are replacing them with trees which max out around ten feet. So you can add a whole bunch of ten-foot trees, but I still don't think that makes up for a thirty-foot tall tree. Now, most of the trees that are being removed are crab apples, I have no idea if that's because they don't like picking up the apples from the lawn or not. But it does seem that they are, I think. Making it more difficult to understand the impact on the landscape, the way that they label things. So that's.
We have images, can we also look at the existing house? Yeah, that's probably the best we'll get, it's very pretty.
I agree, and it's obviously built into the landscape. I think if they, the, it's, it's nicely done.
Sometimes it makes a difference to, and, you know, we always wanna evaluate what's it look like, but it also matters who's the architect. Jerome Bailey Foster is one of the, um, and again, I'm sorry, I don't have the form, um, but it, uh, he's really, this is one of his. I, he, he was, he lived in Winchester, but he was recognized nationally, he's in the League of Royal Berrywells, very similar colonial revival architect. And he lived in Winchester, he's one of our great local architects.
Um, I have a clarifying question, I think I'm confused about something, so I did love the house that is there, but. Aren't we just talking about the design and not lifting the delay?
That's the problem, these are being confused, one is the demolition delay bylaws stands by itself, and it's in these um, town of Winchester code bylaws. This is a criteria that we're looking at, one of many, that could include the landscape too, but in the neighborhood, character of the neighborhood. But this is one of the criteria for both special permit and site plan review, so they really should be decoupled.
What is the criteria?
Well, I need, I have my zoning bylaw right here.
No, I mean, are you talking that it's linked with lifting the demo?
No, they're not, they're really not.
Yeah, that's why I'm confused.
Form was prepared, and we haven't gotten the form, even though the form exists.
So we're just evaluating this based on site plan, review, and special permit. And so we can ignore the fact that there was a demo delay, because that's not part of our consideration here.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, so we can look at, and we have in the past objected to, I believe it was one of the two, because. That involved the demolition or the removal of a historic structure. So we could certainly say that this is a negative impact on the historic structure, because it is, it's making it go away.
But I was confused, um, why? Like, for not, for um, for Edgewater, why the historic commission said that it wasn't an impact on a historic. Resource, when obviously it was.
Because they have a different idea of mid mo- mid-century modern, don't we?
No, but I mean. Were they talking about, like, if it's, if the building's gone, they're just talking about the new building does not have an impact? I mean, I, I just didn't understand, because then there's still the historic context and.
There was not a unanimous decision, by the way.
No, I know.
Which is why we really do have to, can't, and we're often hearing that some board or another has voted this way, but it was, it was not a unanimous decision. But it's exactly what D M said. They just didn't seem to have the sympathy for the mid-century house. And I do, but, and some of them, and actually Design Review was the same thing, but.
So for this one, it's not that the historical didn't find it historical. They found it historical and they did the delay.
Right.
What the Historical Commission does in this situation is they go into negotiations with the applicant because it's going to be demolished, because it's, they're going to sit it out. And they come in and they use it as a negotiation to get what is before us today. So they, they, it's, what the Historical Mission did is they lifted the delay of the one year to get what is being proposed to us now. And so we can.
Why would they do that?
Because then they, they were able to, they are able then to, there's all different reasons of why they do it, but usually it has to do with what is being proposed, they feel is appropriate for the neighborhood. And they, is, is what they feel is acceptable.
But I want to add that I don't.
Still a loss. It's still a loss, but the day, but you know, town meeting only gave the bylaw rights for one year. And so either you can go and you can work and work with the development team and create what is before us, or you can wait the year out. And then they're just going to do something that is less, is more impactful to the neighborhood. However, with this, they're obviously coming in their site plan and special permit due to the conditions of the land that they are trying to, you know, the size of the house and stuff, as Brian said, the criteria, which is what's picking it up.
It just seems to undermine demo delay if they would then lift it for a project that they like.
Right, right. And I don't, I don't think they, and I don't, you know, it's, it's all, but it's hard. Every people are figuring, understand, picking it up and learning what the negotiation possibilities are. But the reality is if they understood that this, what they saw and by, and again, it was not, it was a majority, but it was not by any means unanimous. There was one missing person and two did not support lifting the delay. So, but once, if this is linked with this special permit, and this will come up before this board in the future, that when you see the connection and say, no, we are not going to support this special permit, that that can become the further, it's, it's, it's another part of the conversation. But they are, I do want to go back. Our decision is regardless of the demolition delay, which is again, it's in a separate alley, it's a separate neighborhood, it's not ours. Our, where we belong is in this decision. And that we have, for one of our criteria, it's minimize any adverse effect on any historic resource. This has been evaluated both by a peer review and the Historical Commission as a historic resource. That's where we are. And it's strong. And I think it's, this board wanted that in there. We brought it before town meeting. And so that's under site plan review. And then under special permit, we're also supposed to evaluate the impact on a historic resource. Well, certainly a demolition is a huge impact on a historic resource. So there it is. I don't think it's a lot to chew on.
Yeah, I agree. And I just want to step into the Historical Commission's, defend them a bit. I mean, they are, they have a single lever that they can use to try to impose some sort of design criteria, what's going to happen after the thing is demolished. And that's to lift the delay. So if they choose not to lift the delay and the developer has deep enough pockets, they'll just sit it out and build whatever they want. And that's what happened to the house next to mine. The developer just said, you know, I don't want to deal with you people. I'll just do whatever I want. And that's what happened. If the developer or the people who own the land have shorter timeframes, then it is, does provide the Historical Commission with the lever to try to mediate, as Heather von Mering said, the impact. So it's a judgment call. They felt this was sufficient to mediate the impact. And perhaps they felt that if they waited out longer, they would, something, as Heather pointed out, worse would be built. So, you know, it's a judgment call they made. We're not in their shoes. It's hard to know what the, you know, I don't know what different designs came before them. And they said, well, this isn't going to get any better. Let's cut our losses or whatever. So.
Can, this is Cheryl. Can I ask a question about the design that's being put forward? Aside from the historical aspect of this, which I, I respect and understand. Is this a developer or is this a, a resident trying to build a new house?
Neither.
There is a.
This is a, so this is a, this is a resident who wants to build a new house.
They aren't residents yet, but anyway, they've bought the land and.
They live in, I think, they live in Commonwealth Ave in Boston or something like that. That's what's on the.
As far as we know, is that right?
It's not a developer. No, I've, I've attended the Historical Commission's meetings and I know what's, I mean, I don't think it's relevant here. But anyway, it's not a developer.
So I don't remember the technicalities of this, Brian, and you might be able to fill it in, or engineering may be able to. There are two options they have. They could just pull the demo permit and then apply for a building after the building's been demolished.
So, so, so they could, because the lot is considered non-conforming, although I, I don't really, it's debatable, I think, depending upon the frontage of being able to go down to fifty feet. But let's assume that it is non-conforming. Then if they're going to build one inch out of that footprint, then there, it's a special permit. I mean, they, they can't, they, the only thing they can do by right at this point, now that the delay has been lifted, is, yeah, they could build on the footprint. But if, or, or I guess, or I guess less, I guess less than the footprint.
One thing that should be explained, because I don't know what the abutters think about this, so that's another issue. If they were to appeal, they would question whether this is a true cul-de-sac. It's not rounded at the far end. So there's that. So do they actually have the reduced amount of frontage required? If you're on a cul-de-sac and it's not a rounded curved end, the way you would describe a cul-de-sac. So there's, there's a legal issue on this one.
So members of the planning board, obviously, I mean, I don't think any of us disagree that this is, that the existing house is not a historical resource. The Historical Mission did find it to be historical, but they waived the demo delay from there. But that's not under our authority. Our authority is to review it under the site plan criteria and the special permit criteria. Both which talk about impacts on historic resources. As defined by section ten, which is what the Historical Commission did say, it is a historical resource. So I, I see, I understand what's going on. I do want to say, if you took all of, if you took the historical resource out of the equation, that what is being proposed is actually for the size of the house and the massing is very well done. But at the same time, it does impact the historical resource. I know Maureen wished, we had the sheet, so she had more to talk about it. But I think, and I don't want to put words in her mouth, but the five of us are pretty well advert, are pretty well informed on the historical. You can see that it's a Roy Berry Wells based on the, the chimney massing and the, it looks very much like his own house, which he had in town as well. So there's a lot of similarities to it. The, I, it's, it's, it's a very tricky situation, this one. So.
You're going to be, and I won't be on the board, but talk about consistency. But we are going to be seeing other instances and some that this board cares about where there's a developer in play who is interested in taking down a historic resource, but will not actually close on the deal until that is, that developer feels that he's got the special permit. So these are conjoined and that should be to the advantage of the, the town more generally to encourage the preservation of historic resources. So I do think that with some situations, it's going to really be important. So I'm speaking to the future members of this planning board that the understanding is there that there is some ability to work with the under, the, what, acknowledgement of the historic resource in, say, you're going to support that you're, it's special permit, it's like plan review, but let's talk about special permit is not going to be granted with a, an impact on the historic resource. It's a, it's a pretty important aspect of the process.
I agree. And I, I think one of the, the reasons for using that is to, to have a conversation about appropriate redevelopment, if you want to call it that, retaining the historical resource. I mean, we've talked, we, we actually now have a new bylaw which allows for us to take that into account. So that developers can, so that we can protect historical resources and still have development. And I think that we should, this is another tool. And I certainly would like to have seen something which is more respectful. I mean, as Heather pointed out, this may be a beautiful building. It's well-designed. I have no qualms with that, but there is an impact of the landscape and an impact to the existing structure, the historic resource that I think needs to be acknowledged. And if we have a lever which could create a conversation where that actually, we, we, we can talk about it and maybe come up with something which is better.
I see where we're moving to. I'm going to allow the applicant to come in. I know it's ten o'clock, Maureen. If you are done, you're welcome to leave. We do have, we still have a forum, but I'd like to push through and get through these.
I'll stay for this.
So to the applicant, I, I would like to open it up to you if you have any questions or comments for us. What it really comes down to is number eight of the special permit criteria. By doing what you're proposing, you are impacting a historic resource, which is the historical house that is there. You actually have not a non-conforming, some things going on with your lot. And so it's that. And then it's also the site plan criteria as well, which is nine point five point seven as well. And the historical is number two, any adverse effect on any historic resource. So yes, it is your own historic resource on the property, but that is what you're impacting. And so that's why the planning board is coming in at this time. Did you have any questions or comments?
So Madam Chair, this is Larry Murray, a lot from Aubrey and Quill, web offices at one sixty-five Washington Street. And I have with me Bruce Ringwald of G P R Engineering Solutions. And I'd like to have him speak to these issues. I would just say briefly that although I certainly understand and appreciate your comments regarding the historical issues, that the Historical Commission did vote four in favor and two abstained. There was no negative votes. There was one person absent. So it was unanimous in the sense of the vote. And I do think that there is a distinction between the wonderful work that the historical board does and the wonderful works the planning board does. And I think that the Historical Commission took great pains to study and go over this very carefully and did something almost on their own, kind of sourceponte, as you will, to take away the delay. It wasn't even requested. They, they on their own volition decided that they were so impressed by the plan that they, they felt it was important to, to take away the delay. So without saying anything further on that, I would ask if Madam Chair, if Bruce Ringwald could speak briefly.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to speak. My name is Bruce Ringwald from Ghostwood Preston Ringwald. We have a team of Melos and Palladino, the architects, and Matthew Cunningham, associates, the landscape architects and ourselves. We've worked on this project as a team with the Historic Commission. We did take many of the aspects, the architects did, of, of the existing structure and incorporated those into the design of the proposed structure. We tried work, to work with the existing structure, given that it is a, an older structure and has many small rooms within it. The pattern and the, the flow just didn't work to add to this on the site without having a big impact as well on the waterfront. Our proposed structure is a little further back from the waterfront. The current house is not visible from the cul-de-sac. And it is behind me in the background that you see here, not visible from the lake either. On the other side, you can see a small section of, of the roof from the other side. The proposed house, if, Brian, if you go to the couple photos above this, there was some, right there, yep, those are, these are ones that the landscape, that the Historic Commission has attached into their plan. That's from the, the water side. You'll scroll down one or up one, I believe. That's the water. Let's go one more. This is again, from the water and the lower left here is from, what would be the front yard. If you could see from the cul-de-sac, you'd see the lower left corner there. Again, the rounding of the roof, the stone facade, the various different features and changes where many of the existing architecture that were incorporated into that. Brian, if you could roll down to the very end of those photos that you have, of the, the parts of the application, the last several screens. Starting right there. Whoops, backup right there. So this is what it looks like from the cul-de-sac and what it would look like from the future. There are two stone pillars. Those are coming down. We are doing a lot of landscaping. I'll address the comment that you had before about the landscaping in a second. If you go to the next picture, please, Brian. This is from the front yard of the place on the site. This is a fifty-two thousand square foot, fifty-three thousand square foot lot in a ten thousand square foot zone. The next picture, please. This is looking out at the yard. You can see a little lips of the house next door through the driveway entrance there and in the front yard that will be in use. I want to keep you here for one second. You mentioned that they're not residents of the town. They have three children. Two of them are residents with their families in town. And the third one has recently married one of the firefighters in town. And they're moving into a, a home in town as well. So these folks are selling their property in Boston and they're creating a place here on the lake so that the whole family can get together and have a place to be together and have the whole family within the town of Winchester. And I believe that they are currently, and the addition of the, the rest of the family will be strong assets to the community. If you'll roll to the next picture, please. These are renderings. This would be from the front yard looking out onto Upper Mystic Lake. One more, please. This is from the yard looking back at the, the waterfront side of the house, very low profile. It is single story on the wings and only the center portion has a second story. And one more, I think I have one more photo there, or one more rendering. And this is from the lake. This is an existing dock. We've worked through and met with Conservation Commission and engineering, as Brian said, and gone through all the things comments that they had. So for one relative to the trees that you called out earlier on the height, the Conservation Commission in town has a policy that any tree within their jurisdiction that is removed must be replaced with a similar linear footage in height. There are five roughly thirty foot high, very old dying crab apple trees in the backyard which are within their jurisdiction, not because they're within a hundred feet of the pond, but because with, within a floodplain zone. And those are being replaced around the perimeter and other portions with smaller trees. That is the way the policy reads to replace with, if you take down a twenty foot tree, you can put in. That is, uh, the way the policy reads to replace with, um, if you take down a 20-foot tree, you can put in a 20-foot or you can put in, um, multiple, two 10-foot trees. Uh, so we've done that and worked that through. Um, Brian and, uh, Brian Mantor mentioned there were two issues that were outstanding. The sewer line connection, um, was one of them. There is a sewer easement across the adjacent property. Brian, I don't know if you have, uh, if you can go to my site plan or if you'd like, I can share the screen and bring the site plan up. It's not in that package. It's a, the separate plans. Either the site plan or the landscape architecture plan.
So just made you a co-host, uh, let's go ahead.
Yeah. So this is, um, an aerial of the site here. Um, there is a sewer line that has an easement across this property and goes over to Edgewater Place. That easement is in existence. Um, we have camered the line and provided the engineering and, uh, the sewer and water district with a copy of that. Um, we will be replacing the sewer manhole that's right about where my cursor is, the hand is here on the property with a new sewer manhole. Um, and then cleaning the first sectional line, the very first piece of it has, um, roots within it and we're going to clean that and line that. And if that doesn't work uh, with the commission, we'll replace, with the sewer department, we'll replace that sectional line. The second is, is that on this property, we are reducing the impervious surface from the existing conditions to the proposed conditions. So we are dramatically reducing the runoff from the site in the the two, 10, 25, 50, and 100-year storm, as well as we are providing more infiltration on the site than all those. So we're bettering the runoff to the, um, the lake. Um, we are putting in, uh, a storm chambers to collect all of the impervious area of the roof um, and recharging all that for the various storms, as we've agreed to with the conservation commission and the engineering department. If there is a very, very large storm approaching, uh, upwards of over a 50-year storm, the, um, this particular drainage system that sits underneath this patio has a pop-up emitter that is within the 25-foot setback, and the commission reviewed that onsite and approved that, that position. So the, the two concerns that Brian had have been addressed. Um, and we are moving forward with that. The, uh, the trees and the plantings are ones that the conservation commission has been happy with, uh, on the site and that we meet their requirement for that. So the layout of the house and the landscaping and the yard are all taken into account for views from other places. Trying to incorporate it, and the commission, historic commission felt that we did incorporate many of those aspects of the existing architecture. Um, but the fact is, is that the, the, the program for the house to have the family gatherings doesn't work with the small rooms in the position of the existing house to allow for this, uh, addition to happen. This is not a developer. This is someone that will be a resident of the town and several of their family members are currently.
So, um, I'm gonna chime in, um, being, I was the chair who pushed through, uh, the preservation bylaw. That is a, that is a town bylaw. That is not a zoning bylaw. It has no impact on the zoning bylaws for the planning board. Um, when we look at the special permit criteria, impacts on historic resources is defined in section 10 of the zoning bylaws. When you look at the zoning bylaws, section 10, you go to the definitions. This house meets that definition. There's no question about it. It's actually why this definition is very similar to what's in the local bylaws. It's why they delayed it. Why they lifted it is a different story. It's, we don't take that into consideration in the zoning. It doesn't say, take that into consideration. It doesn't talk about the preservation bylaw. Um, and so it, it goes back to, you are impacting the historic resources defined in the zoning by demolishing it to build this. Now, we can talk about the trees. We can go through the engineering, go through all of it. It still does not change that this house that is currently sitting there is historic. It meets the criteria in the zoning bylaw, which impacts number eight of the special permit. It impacts the site plan review number two. And that is where, that's what we're left with. And there's, there isn't a way to, um, there isn't, there is no way and are, from my perspective, that you can negotiate out of that. Because that is what it is. It's the law. It's the way it's written. It's the way town meeting voted it in, and that's what we follow. And it is a historical resource. It's, do, this project impacts the historical resource that's there. And that, that's, it's, I, that's it, that's it. And there's no, it's not, you can, well, the historical commission waived the demo. They found it to be historical. They still find it to be historical, but on the town bylaw side, they waived it. But they still find it to be historical. Um, so that's where I stand. Um, members of the planning board?
Well, I guess, um, motions welcome to recommend unfavorable action under both the special permit and site plan review.
Is there a second?
Oh, second it.
Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Hannah, aye.
Curious, aye.
Um, Meister, aye.
Did we lose Cheryl?
Yes, um, she must have left the meeting.
Yeah, we lost Cheryl. Von Mering, aye. Motion passes 4-0 with Wolf absent to recommend unfavorable action. Going onward. Um, I'm sorry to keep you guys going, um.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, planning board, I would like to just keep through and plow through these if we can. I know Maureen's gonna leave. Heather, are you able to stay?
Uh, which ones do we have left?
We have, um, Swan Street, there's Abbey Road, oh, and there's the A and Rs. We could do the A and Rs right now and just, those are really quick. You can get those taken care of. We can let those go too, and they'll just be automatically approved. Is approval not required?
Yeah.
Questions upon proceed.
I mean, we don't even sign them.
No, not right now.
You vote to au- you vote to authorize the clerk to, um, to sign for you.
Well, can we do it this way? Brian, are there any issues with 35 or Taft or 57 Swan?
There's no issue.
No issue.
There, there's no issues with the A and R. There are no issues with the, with, with the two A and Rs.
Engineering, any issues? Uh, you were speaking for both you and engineering, Brian? So Kelly. Uh, engineering.
No issue, Heather.
No, no issues.
35 Taft or 57 Swan Road.
Um, all right, can we get a motion? Do you have?
Before, before you make that motion, I would say that, like, I, I, the, the vote here typically during, uh, remote, uh, work, how we've been doing it is, um, you would vote to endorse and then you would authorize the clerk to, um, to sign on your behalf.
Are those two separate motions or a single?
You can do it in a single motion. We've, we've done it before.
Okay, so I vote to endorse the A and Rs, uh, for 35 Path Drive and 57 Swan Road and authorize the town clerk to sign the documents.
Is there a second?
Yep.
Discussion? Roll call vote?
Hannah, aye.
Curious, aye.
Von Mering, aye. Motion passes 3-0 with Maureen Meister and Cheryl Wolf absent. Um, we actually have to postpone, um, 247 Swan because we don't have a quorum because I have to recuse myself.
And I have to recuse myself.
Um, so that one has to either be, that won't be reviewed by the planning board or we'll, um, have to postpone it to a different time. Um, Brian, is that, that's on the later in the month?
So the 18th, so that gives us the chance to, uh, to squeeze, to, I mean, we're trying to squeeze everything on the 9th, but, um, but, but it gives us the chance to do that on the 9th potentially. Uh, there certainly is no room on the 4th.
Oh, wait a second. Maybe I'm, I have to make sure I got my numbers swapped. Um, 140, what, 152? No, I think I have my numbers swapped. I have to recuse myself from 152.
Oh, good. So we're done.
That, that, that's true, uh, if that is the case.
And Abbey Road.
Then Abbey Road would still go forward, uh.
I think that we need more time for Abbey Road.
Yeah. So those three will have to postpone till later. I'm so sorry for everyone who stayed with us. Um, to go, to stay for those particular ones and, um, we, since we lost, um, I, we knew, I knew we were gonna lose Maureen at 10. I didn't know we were, Cheryl was gonna sign off, so. Since we don't have a quorum on 247 and 152, and Abbey Road will take us way too late that we're gonna really lose everyone. Um, to have that, I will postpone that one and come back to it. Our next meeting, um, is this Thursday. Um, it is straight up just for 654 Main Street. Um, we are dedicating the whole time to that. Um, and so it will look like, this will probably go on to the 9th, March 9th agenda. Where was, at 7:30? Brian?
Um, we, I mean, these are not, uh, actual hearings that we need to continue.
No, I, just because I know there's people here.
Time start, sure, I know.
Yeah, I did feel like to be fair to them since they waited this whole time and then we had to postpone doing it for another week.
Um, okay, so, uh, as of now, there is nothing on the 9th in terms of, of a specific time. So you can, you, you can pick a, you can, if you'd like, it makes sense to get these uh, out of the way first. Yeah, right out of the way first on the 9th.
All right, so that would be at 7:30. And we'll go through these three, 247 Swan Street, 152 Swan Street, and Lot 2 of Abbey Road. Um, so that's at 7:30 on the 9th. I will put that on our agenda, and I'm so sorry to everyone who's here waiting. I, my deepest apologies that, um, we hold so late into the evening. Um, so we're all set there. Um, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Hannah, aye.
Curious, yippee.
Von Mering, aye. Thank you, everyone. That is the end of our meeting. Thank you, WinCam. Thank you, engineering. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Nancy. And thank you to all the public who joined us for not only the North Main Street Community Meeting, but also for going through all these petitions and permits um, for the ZBA. We'll continue up with the three we missed today, and I'm so sorry again. I feel really bad because I know, I don't like to waste anyone's time, so. Thank you very much and see you everyone, uh, Thursday hopefully for 654 Main Street. Good night.